Hey. You're not gonna raise the public right now.
No, I'm doing a post. Okay. I'm not, no, I've never bring it up yet.
So.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay.
Oh, that's, that's the Achilles heel.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sweater, man. We gotta protect.
Hey, I got a post session.
I think we can just do it in post session and just make a connection.
We may be too, but we're gonna have a post session in January to discuss litigation.
Okay.
And I'm not in any rush. The only way we're rushing is if you don't do it, then I have to go and get twenty five hundred signatures and put it on the ballot. And you really want me to do that?
No.
And I don't want either.
I heard. What did he mention? Bieber has the same two weeks. It's like, yes, I can only get every last ten.
One minute.
Yeah.
Well, no.
The Z B A. You know, his first turn it over at the man, they gotta do that though.
Okay.
I just, I just don't.
Yeah. That's what we think. This company, I heard him discuss, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of nasty.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to call this December eighth, two thousand twenty five meeting of the Gross Point Farm City Council to order. A city clerk and assistant city manager, Kaziki, will you please call the role?
Uh, speaking.
We'll do right after that, please.
How was member Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Conrad Wilberding.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Donovan.
Here.
Mayor Paul Senna Sroka.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse councilperson Conrad Wilberding, please?
Don't move.
Is it support?
Support.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Deputy Chief Rogers, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please. Pledge of Allegiance. We have a state's America into the Republic from which it stands us, one nation under God, in this law with liberty, freedom, and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. We have a very ambitious agenda tonight. I'm very glad each and every one of you attended. And the first item of business is reading and consideration of the minutes of our city council meeting of November tenth, two thousand twenty five. Has everyone had a chance to review the proposed minutes? Yes.
Yes.
Any additions, modifications to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November tenth, two thousand twenty five, please.
Don't move.
Wait a second.
It's been motioned and supported. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next, I would call Mr. Brickie and Mr. Sherb of Plant Moran to the podium, please. This is agenda item number four, Presentation of the June thirty, two thousand twenty five Audit and Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Mr. Brickie, good evening. For the benefit of those in the audience, Mr. Brickie is with Plant Moran. He's our lead auditor. And I hope, Mr. Brickie, that you will deliver to our council and to our residents the thirty first year of good news, of an unmodified audit, of the highest level, that we're all within budget, so to speak, and I give the floor to you, please, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, good evening, everyone. So as mentioned, I'm Phil Brickie here and talking about the audit of the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five.
It looks like.
And so we talked about the audit and the audit, there were several documents that are issues. Um, so there's some major statements, which is the large document, annual report. We have two separate letters, sir, for your counsel, one related to the internal controls of the city and the second related to the audit process. We also issued reports on municipal radio system and the water rate calculation report. Uh, in addition, we will be issuing a report on the city's compliance with the federal awards, the offensive, the state audit. Uh, there were some delays. Um, with our ability to issue that report because of the government shutdown, they didn't issue the federal compliance supplement, which we had to have before we could issue that report.
Uh, sorry, Bill, I'm being asked to do something. Okay. I got it. Pardon me.
Oh, no problem. Uh, so let's look at the, we have gone through all of these items in detail with management and the audit committee, and my goal tonight is really just to discuss the results of the audit and certainly answer any questions you may have related to the audit itself. Uh, before we get started, just want to take a brief moment and thank Tim and Shane and your entire team for all their assistance throughout the audit. They just do a great job helping us complete the engagement efficiently, and we appreciate all of their cooperation. So we talk about the audit, the main deliverable to your editor is my opinion on your financial statements. So that's included in the financial statements on page one. So the city did receive an unmodified audit opinion again in the current year, which essentially means the financial statements are in compliance with all the rules and regulations. Uh, we often refer to that as a clean audit report. Uh, in addition to that, in addition to the unmodified audit opinion, also pleased to report that we did not have any audit findings in the current year. So the additional letters that we issued, as you look through those, if we had any audit findings or internal control weaknesses, we would uh, document them in those letters. We didn't have any, so as you look at those communications, they basically just say we didn't have any issues, disagreements with management, anything like that. Uh, so overall, very, very clean audit, uh, from that perspective. Uh, although we haven't issued the single audit report on the city's compliance with federal grants, that is done. And just want to share that the results of that review at this time. So essentially, we tested the city's compliance with the one point four million dollars of FEMA grant funds that were received and spent in the current year. Uh, in our, our, our audit found that you did spend those monies in compliance with, with the grant rule and regulations, and, and we will be issuing a clean audit report on that. Uh, this week, again, there's a delay in that due to, uh, some issues at the government. Uh, so overall, as mentioned, the audit went very well. Leadership continues to do an awesome job managing the city's finances. And, you know, again, with that, questions are turning over to Tim to go through some of the control things.
Why don't we turn it over to Mr. Rowland, please? Then I'll ask Chair of our Budget Committee, Councilmember Wood, um, to give a statement or entertain any questions. Thank you, Mr. Brickie.
So I'll go over some of the numbers. Um, the general fund revenue was twenty point one million. Expended through the maximum one eight million for net change in total fund balance, three hundred and six thousand. Bringing our total fund down to seven point two million dollars at the end of the year in the general fund. So of the three hundred and thirty six thousand dollar increase, there's different categories of fund balance. Uh, non, non-spendable, which the inventories are pre-increased by one hundred and sixty six thousand. Committed fund balance decreased by fifty nine thousand, six oh two, who has committed further parking system and further harbor. Signing fund balance decreased by five thousand two eighty seven, which is kind of like you're there with getting a silver dollar agents. And the unassigned fund balance totaled five point four million dollars, which was an increase of five thousand, which is a twenty six point seven percent of our expenditure budget, which is within our range of the one to thirty percent. This shows you graphically how those different categories make, make up those percentages. You can see the historical over the last three years, we're covering around this, almost sixty to twenty seven percent on that fund balance, we've been right in our fund. Where are we getting our money from? So primarily property taxes, seventy five percent of our available property taxes. We also have interest rate at five point four percent, which is primarily investment interest. Building permits at two and a half percent. Organized property coverage, one point four percent. Target for services, just under eight percent. Safety revenue, six point eight percent. And federal grants, general funds were, were. And where we spend the money? Forty percent on public safety. Uh, one point eight percent on the court, forty percent in general government. Uh, seventy percent is transfers out of other funds, those are the capital profits fund. Parks and Rec, eight and a half percent. The public works, essentially seventy percent there as well. Really, the highlight of our spending is our, I think, spent over ten million dollars in total capital spending this third, this year. That include public safety vehicles and equipment, three hundred and twenty four thousand. P P W vehicles and equipment, including the new tractor truck, five hundred and seventy five thousand. Peer park improvements, which included the Perrinola at the, uh, the ballworks, was two hundred and six thousand total. Land purchases, one point one million improvements, which were the first of the Mac Avenue building. It's all repaid in the last at the Dog Park in City Hall. City Hall improvements, one hundred and thirty three thousand, it was restroom, rezil, rezil, under the first level. And then sidewalk repairs, this trip hazard sidewalk was one point three hundred and seventy nine thousand. I took spend additional one hundred and sixty two thousand, that's how I lost the part of this development. There's just over three million dollars on our local program. Four point six million on water sewer infrastructure, including water main and sewer separation project. Gas position and the water sewer fund decreased by one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Water was slightly down by one and a half percent on the prior year, but it seemed to have leveled a lot a little bit, as far as the feedback we've seen in previous years. We're beginning to get the FEMA money for a ten percent reimbursement of pension during cost on the sewer separation project. Last thing I want to talk about is pension and old debt. So you can see at twenty point five, um, federal pension was at ninety six percent funded, public safety pension, one hundred and twelve percent funded. Next, general retired healthcare, seventy three percent. And public safety, retired healthcare, seventy five percent. So all well above the state, they were targeting sixty percent for pensions and forty percent for retired healthcare. And probably some of the better percentages you'll see in a later state issue. Now, I'll take any questions, Councilman Adam.
Any questions from council before I turn it over to, uh, Councilmember Wood? Mr. Wood, please, who serves as Chair of our Budget Committee.
Done. Uh, first thing I'd like to say is that I'd like to thank again Chairman and Shane and the team, and, and, and in particular, the, every single year, you know, the, uh, the directors of the department have to go through the budget process and, you know, people that, I've been doing this now, been chairman now for well, the fourteen years that I've been up here and every year, it's, it's, I very, very, that Plant Rand comes in and gives us an excellent report. Um, just a couple of things that I'd like to note, in particular for the residents. What does all this really mean to you? Well, first, it means that we're an extremely well-run city. We have, um, a budget that we, um, stick to extremely well. And, uh, given a number of different inputs, uh, the end result is, is that we have a very, very good bond rating for our city. I know that you mentioned bond rating here, Tim, but I think it's important to note. What does bond rating mean to you? All, all people in the audience are going, so what? Big deal? What's the bond rating? Well, what it means is when we have to finance our sewer separation project, like we're doing right now, or if we have a water main project or something substantial where we have to go out, go to the bond market, we get the very best interest rates we can because we have a triple A bond rating. And that's because of all the financial stuff that Tim has shown you here. It's the very, very best, the country, in the country, we get the best bond rating. And as a result, we go out and buy rate, we go, we have, we go out and we have the lowest amount of interest that we have to pay on, on our debt. So that's extremely good for our city. So, um, I want to thank again, uh, the group of you guys, uh, our committee has been great, terms of working with. Um, I don't have too much more to say, but let's keep going. And the thirty year, let's do it again for thirty one and thirty two and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'd invite public comment from anybody in the public who would like to speak on this issue. Please come up to the podium, as required by the Open Meetings Act. Please give your name and address, and we welcome you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. David Pitts, I live at three two four Shell phone avenue. Been over here for twenty four years. They have a sewage waste plant across street from me. I've been dealing with the stink from over there for the last ten. Dancing in my yard and enjoying my grandmother, aunties and aunts, kids play. I smell sewage all the time. They, uh, I, we rid it down. Every day I smelt it. And it was every day this week but one. And I think that needs to be addressed. But the taxes I pay to live over here, it's, it's not fair. And they building, they putting some pipes in, I see on the corner, that's gonna be running all the way to Jeff's. Plus some water, some, some, some type of line. Well, why don't they run that pipe from this stink hole across the street from me all the way to Jeff's? And I guarantee the people up there won't have it. I can't even sit in my yard, my wet ass asthma, my kids, I have to close all the toilet, toilet lids in the house. Sometimes the honey water in the house and smell it. It's ridiculous. It needs to be addressed. Because I don't know what, what we smelling and breathing in, me and my family, my grandkids, my kids. And neighbors. I'm pretty sure you saw us on channel seven.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So what are we gonna do about that?
Well, I'll tell you, and I, it's Mr. Pitts, correct?
Yes.
I, Mr. Reside, and I just finished talking about this less than five minutes before the meeting started. And I'm gonna, uh, let, uh, our city manager tell you what, how we're being proactive about that.
Been telling me for ten, five, six years. I didn't, I didn't talk to him, I knew shit.
Yeah, no, I know. He'll fill everybody in.
He walks, he walks past my house in this white something. I'm pretty sure he smelled it.
No, he does, and I've smelt it too, and it's unacceptable, quite frankly. And we're working with the state, we're working with the city, we're working with the county. Unfortunately, due to a large construction project, um, at Jefferson, uh, the Fox Creek project, a lot of the gates are closed, so to speak. It has been an extremely dry, uh, summer and fall. And when the wet flow doesn't come through there, uh, the city of Gross Point's having the same thing uh, around their pump station. Um, it's not acceptable. And we are looking at ways to have our engineers, Hubble, Roth and Clark, get out there in the very near future, I can assure everyone, to make sure that the filters are appropriately checked, to see if there's anything else that we can do uh, to eliminate that problem, because neither you nor anyone who comes in the area, uh, should have to tolerate that. And I'm very familiar with what you're saying. And Mr. Reside, you can add, please.
Yeah, it is. And I, and I've been involved with the city for, for many years, as you know, and, and we've had periodic issues with uh, odor coming from, uh, the Southeast McComb Pumpage Station, uh, in the past. But this is different. This, this is, uh, this year has been, um, um, multiplied by many, many times, uh, the, the frequency and the intensity of the odor. And, well, I, I think it, the, the intensity has, has, has gone up. And, and, and so we have been in direct conversation with Southeast McComb Sanitary District. Uh, Kip Walby is a, is a, is a director of that. And, uh, I've had conversations as, 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 even today. Um, so they have hired ECS, which is Environmental Solutions, to evaluate the odor control system at that station. They're actively doing that. They're fast-tracking replacement of, um, uh, the, the, the carbon activated filters that, uh,
The filters, I've been hearing this for too long.
Well, that, it, though they, they.
Just like it smelled down on seventy five and, and, uh, and Shane there. The place they call me on or whoever had shut down, that's that smell over there every day almost.
Yeah.
Every day.
Oh, the filters have not, were changed.
Still, still not, still nobody over there.
Well, let, 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 let us work on it.
That.
Mr. Pitts.
With nobody by my house, if they knew that, that the issues I'm going through.
Mr. Pitts, I, I hear you. We, we are aware of it, and I, and, and I, I promise you, we're doing, we're actively trying to come up with a solution. And, uh, I, we have, as early as January, will be, those, those filter beds will be replaced uh, with new G A C filters. They're evaluating all other odor control. I mean, we're even having H R C look at our own systems within our own pump stations to see if there's anything that could be a contributing factor or, or be addressed. Uh, they've done odor control for, uh, McComb County, that, and they've done odor abatement there that has been successful. And we're looking at some of the things that they've done to solve their issues, to see if we can bring that here.
I see a lot of big fat trucks come over there. I used to work before I retired from where I'm now. I used to work for the environmental safety company. And them big fat trucks that come over here, should they put the, all that stuff out the ground? I used to clean them hoses out. So I know what's happening. Those are, uh, all type of chemicals, P C Ps and stuff. And I watched them. I walked over there when that truck backed in, and I videoed them on my phone. They put all their waste right in our truck, right in the drag, right in front of me, you didn't, didn't, didn't stop and then I videoed. That, that stuff shouldn't be going in our trains, man.
Yeah, I don't know.
That stuff should be going.
I don't know, I don't know what that was that you referred to.
Go to a landfill, don't you think?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
They brought to the big trucks, they suck, they suck. They suck, uh, the sewers out or whatever, they suck grease out of restaurants or whatever, and they pour all that stuff into them trucks. And them trucks, that big, big hoses they go, they snap on and they can move from here all the way to out in the street. They put all them chemicals in there and they dump across the street from mine. Now my kids can't come outside and play.
I know.
They're breathing that stuff in. It's horrible, man.
Yeah, well, like the city manager said, and I said, we are acutely aware of the problem. We're doing everything we can. We're gonna bring good news to you and all your residents and your neighbors in the very, very near future. Stay in touch, don't hesitate to call me, and rest assured, we're gonna get it done.
Thank you.
Councilman Ritchie first, please.
Can we put a, um, a time limit on this? Can we get back with Mr. Pitts within ninety days?
Well, I'm, within ninety days, we will have, okay, so just understand, so there's, there is a, a pump station at, at, on Shell phone, uh, which is the, the Southeast McComb Sanitary District. So it used to be the Wayne County Pump Station.
Right.
So it, it's not a, a city facility. It's a, it's a private, private facility, uh, or governmental entity that is, that operates the, the station. And, um, and so we are working with them directly. And, and again, they, 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 they are fast-tracking, they've already getting quotes and bids to, to get the, the filters replaced, which I understand were replaced seven years ago was the last time they were replaced. But there's something else going on, and, and, and dryness is a contributing factor. We actually have gone through a drought period the last several months. And, uh, what you have, you're not getting the rainfall that's coming through and, and really flushing that system. Um, that's a contributing factor, but, but it's a reality. We're dealing with it, so we have to come up with a, a solution, and how, how do we, we address that?
I agree, but can we give Mr. Pitts
Yeah.
a ninety day window and come back in ninety days, and hopefully you're gonna report back that you're satisfied with what we've accomplished.
So, Mr. Rich.
Pardon?
I hope so, too.
I do, too. I will provide, I will provide council and, and, and our residents a monthly report of what's transpiring.
Councilmember Wood.
Uh, Shane answered my question, but I wanted to be sure it's clear that where, that the odor that the gentleman is referring to is not coming from the city-owned, um, uh, pump station at Warner Shell pond. It is coming from another entity's infrastructure, correct?
That's, that's our belief, yes.
So it's in our, it's in our town, so it's in our, however, um, there is other governmental entities involved in all this, which complicates things. It's not something that we can just go ahead and do internally, fix it.
Yeah.
Councilmember Donovan.
Mr. Mayor, I would request, or may I request that the Pitts, uh, please return to the podium?
Sure. Mr. Pitts, can you come back up, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
And a couple of things. You mentioned that you have video.
Yes.
Will we be able to, um, see that video footage? Because if what you're saying is correct, we do need to know that. If there's any illegal dumping going on on those grounds.
They've been doing that, Steve.
Do it.
They've been doing it. My phone don't have, like, I just turned it off. It don't have, like, three bars on it, but I could bring them back tomorrow or, uh, in the morning or something.
That would be good.
Video. Yes, I do. That ain't the first time.
Thank you so much. The other thing I would like, um, the city to know, Mr. Mayor, is I moved here in two thousand eleven, and I did not know the Pitts family. But it was such a pleasure to see the children running up and down the street, and not just his children. Um, but they'd have these wonderful barbecues that went on for a few years, and then I noticed something. The activities started dwindling.
Yes.
The cars started to care. In the last couple of years, there has been almost no activity for them, um, to enjoy outdoors, outdoor activities.
You are right.
And so I want you to know that my communications with, um, our city manager has, he has heard. And I am pleased with, um, even some current things that are underway. It's my understanding there that there is a meeting taking place. Um, and so I can assure you that this is not gonna be swept under the table. And then, Mr. Mayor, I made, um, another observation about over a week ago, I, when the odor came again, because I live in the area, and this is, this is just strange. Um, I went out, did it and checked around. I went over to the D P W garage, smelt nothing, and there was no wind. I went to the Southeast McComb Sanitation uh, Department, smelt the door, that area, walked around, there was no odor. But I will tell you, there appears to be a point of origin, um, at a specific house. Um, but I got on the ground, smelt the ground, I smelt grass, I smelt soil, and I smelt just, you know, rust. And I started coughing. But the odor was not there, but when I stood up, then I could smell it. And I have bronchitis myself, and I thought that was important to put on the record because in, at that particular location, it is massively
Yes.
strong.
Yes, it is.
So.
After I let the windows down, I had to let all my toilet lids down, I bought a little rubber stopper to go over my, in my bathtub, in the shower area, just to keep the smell coming. So I don't know if some pipes up on it, one of them, like this crack or whatever, or whatever, or these streets is show, surely needs to be repaired in, in that block. I didn't lose the repair in the streets if you have something broke underneath there.
But I appreciate you coming and sharing your concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have been heard.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Mr. Soroka.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about what is the financial relationship between the city's water department and the Southeast McComb station? And if, at the end of the day, there, is there an opportunity to, if we don't get a response to withhold funds, um, from the sewer district? It's a business problem.
So the, so the county, the Southeast McComb Sewer District actually leases that property. So the station is, uh, is owned and operated by them, but the land where it sits is leased. Uh, with that said, um, I do feel they're not being cooperative. Uh, we've, we've had good dialogue, um, and, and it's been spread. I mean, I, I honestly can honestly say, I think I've had four complaints, uh, regarding odors, you know, th- this year, which is more than I had last year, but, but it, it's different. It's, 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 it's much stronger and, uh, and, and, and the duration is, is, is is constant. So, um, there's something going on, and partly the weather, it's a weather issue, then we've got to figure out how to counter that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that my, my view is, is obviously you catch more flies with honey than you do with vinegar, but we also have to be able to, to
Sure.
hold them to account if they're not taking action. Um, and I do agree with Mr. Ritchie that having some sort of set amount of time, I think will be important. Um, but if we're having forward movement, that's the important thing, because we just gotta get it solved.
Mr. Johnson.
Uh, hi, David.
Hi, how you doing, Mr. Jackson?
Good, how you doing? I walk, I know Mr. Pitts gonna test his house all the time, as Shane does, too. We walk our dogs here every day. Uh, one of the four people that called and complained to Shane was me.
Yes.
Um, it smells like my old dorm room, and it smells like that all the time. Although this week, you're right, one of the days, for some reason, was odor free. I don't, I don't know why Shane made it something you said or did. But, but, but I can, I can assure you, Shane's on top of it, and I'm gonna stay on top of Shane, make sure it's done, because it stinks at my house, I'm three blocks from you, and it stinks at my house.
Bad.
Um, it's tough to sit, I know you, you bless it when you drive.
No fucking problems with the smell.
Well, rest assured, we're, we're all gonna.
Everything else, you.
Rest assured, we're all, we're all gonna, I'll stay on top of it. I look right next to you there, so we'll take care of it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're gonna circle back to comments regarding the budget. Is there anyone, um, in the public who would like to, uh, make public comment on the budget? If not, is there a motion, uh, to receive, um, the, uh, Gross Point Farms Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for year end, June thirty, two thousand twenty five?
I'll make that motion. You took the words right out of my mouth.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there support? Support by Mr. Soroka? Support by Mr. Soroka, Mayor Pro Tem, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thanks again to our wonderful, uh, our CFO, Mr. Roland, our city manager, Mr. Reese, Mr. Sherb, and Mr. Bricky from, uh, Plant Moran. Well done, gentlemen. Get that award thirty-one years in a row. Thank you very much. Next, just as a, a matter of privilege, I'm curious as to how many people are here for the agenda item regarding the proposed pump station on Chalfont. All right, we are going to, uh, move that up to the next agenda item, please, before we convene as the zoning board of appeals. So let's please consider the, uh, site plan review of the proposed pump station at three five two Chalfont, which is at the corner of Maras and Chalfont. Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we are moving along with our sewer separation project, uh, Division One, the first division. Uh, as all of you are aware, by see the work going on, is a force main and gravity main, uh, that will, will, will be the egress for stormwater, uh, from the inland district going through a new pump station. And, uh, we had purchased the property at the corner of Maras and Chalfont, uh, several years ago, um, really with the intent of, of, of using that as a way to convey stormwater out to the lake. Um, because it has to be done mechanically in the inland district, uh, where the lakeside district that was separated years ago, uh, the, the east side of Ridge, you have gravity working in your favor. Uh, on the inland district, uh, we had to create a pump station force main, uh, for that process. So, uh, in that effort, uh, designs are almost completed for a new pump station, uh, that will accept the, the stormwater for conveyance. And, uh, really the intent is, is when people look at this pump station, they're looking at a house that we would be proud of in the City Gross Point Farms. And so we've been working with Hubbell Rothman Clark, uh, Tom Maxwell, who was, uh, who was one of the principal engineers at HRC is here this evening, um, as well as Adriana Melcher, who is an architect, who's been involved in this process, on, uh, a, a proposed facade, uh, plan for the new pump station, and we're here to present that this evening. So with that, I would invite, uh, either Tom or Andrea. Adriana.
It's, hi, Adrian.
Hi, Adrian, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for calling us here today, and it's been a great work to me. Uh, Shane, I think, and the rest of the city, but Adrian's gonna go through, uh, this, the appearance of the pump station, as you can see on the screen, and
We do like Tom, please.
Yeah, speak up.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Aaron.
Hey, I'll repeat that. Basically, we're here just to talk about the, uh, pump station, the appearance of what it is that you're gonna see, and you can see that there's a, a picture up on the screen, but I've got Adrian, who's the head of our architectural department, to talk to you a little bit about it, answer the questions that you might have.
Adriana, good evening.
Thank you for having us. Um, as you can see, there's a rendering of the, um, the appearance of the pump station, we tried really hard to make sure that it, that it, uh, Be getting mic resolved.
Yeah, the mic, just raise your, yeah, raise your voice a little, the microphone is primarily for internet.
Yeah, we really tried to make sure that the appearance of the pump station was in keeping with the neighborhood. Um, and obviously, we don't wanna make it too nice so that it stands out, uh, or too shabby so that it stands out the other way. So try and do something that's, uh, a very clean, consistent appearance, Cape Cod style, um, so it kind of blends in with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, we're using stone on the base, we've got some, um, high-quality materials on the rest of the building, so some party board siding, um, pre-finished trims, um, asphalt shingles. Um, the appearance on the front is kind of where we put all of the niceties. Um, we've got some, um, windows on the front, as you can see, kind of a porch, um, those are not gonna be functional. Um, it was, there was a concern about security, um, but we wanted that look. Uh, so we've got double-digit windows on the front with some nice shutters, uh, to, uh, increase the, the curb appeal, as it were. Um, we've also got some custom railings on the front, um, around our porch, uh, to kind of give it that, you know, presence, um, kind of a, a welcoming look, uh, without actually drawing people upon the porch, uh, because we've got some process activities that are gonna be happening there. Um, around the side of the building, uh, is where we're gonna kind of keep the, um, the, we have some large doors on the, on the other side of the building, on the driveway side. Um, those will be screened with landscaping, um, so, you know, people who are coming to the building to actively work there, uh, will be kind of parking in the driveway and using the building on that side of the building. But it's, it's pretty well kind of, uh, screened from the streets and, uh, from the neighbor's yard. Uh, we've also got, uh, some landscaping around the perimeter of the building to further, you know, contain the view. Um, all of the equipment that we've got, so we've got a generator, um, which will be, it'll have a house in each of, keep the noise down. Uh, but we've also got a fence around that, and then some other, uh, equipment, so we've got some electrical equipment, all of that goes in the backyard. Um, and that will, again, all be screened with the fence, uh. And we've got some landscaping around the front of it too, kind of, keep it simple though, uh, because we don't want too much maintenance. But otherwise, yeah, trying to keep the look of the building very clean and consistent.
Does anyone, um, from city council have any questions? Councilmember Wood?
I, I think this is great looking. When I saw it, uh, I thought, wow, that's, nobody's gonna know that that's a pump station.
That's, that's the goal, that is the goal.
It's really, it's really attractive. Um, I have some rather mundane but important questions, I mean, uh, this is a really shell of a house, I guess, you could say. There's not very many rooms.
No, it's not, it's not a house at all. It is basically one big room. Uh, there is a stair inside and a restroom, so people can wash up if they need to. Uh, but it's really, it's basically one house, uh, house, it's a blind, but it's very fun.
But below grade.
Below grade.
There is significant amount of, um, of, uh, any number of mechanical things that, that you and Tom are gonna be, you know, putting in for the next year or so. That's really, that's really the meat of the whole thing, is, it's, it's water coming in, then water being pushed back up along the, along the golf course. Unfortunately, I had questions immediately about safety from the standpoint of, um, our public safety guys. Um, you know, they won't, won't be able to look directly through those arbivitae's that are there at the corner. So they're gonna have to drive in occasionally, randomly, I imagine, and just make sure that there's no bad guys going in and out, breaking any windows, creating any problems, which, you know, can happen. Are we gonna have any kind of video cameras or any setup so that we can observe, you know, very carefully? Uh, no vandalism happening, because the last thing we want is anybody to go into those pumps and wreck them.
Yes, uh, Shane.
Yeah, yeah, that's the intent. I think it's similar to like the Orton Field House at Kirby Field, which is, uh, independent building. Uh, our pump station, which is not manned, uh, obviously during, uh, during non-critical times or evenings, um, we do, we will, we plan to, you know, have security features, a well-secured building, but also cameras, uh, to monitor any activity on the exterior of the building.
Okay, well, that's kind of my, um, my thing, I, I, you know, I'm not gonna be able to comment on any of the mechanical systems below grade, because I have no clue. But good work, looks good, so I look forward to seeing it, Pete, oh, thank you.
Councilman Soroka, Mayor Pro Tem Soroka.
Um, my only question is on noise mitigation. Obviously, what kind of, you know, and I, I imagine if I were neighboring this, I'd wanna know exactly how confident we are that it's not gonna be loud even in its loudest moments, um, because especially they, they may be having their own sort of. So what, what is, what kind of noise mitigation are we doing to limit the impact on folks?
You mean just during the operation?
During the operation of the plant, like, because I imagine, right, you're gonna have a generator possibly going, you're also gonna be having pumps going as well. Is there any sort of, uh, obviously, the exterior generator, you got a generator on the outside, you're gonna have some mitigation of that?
It's got a, uh, basically a housing, some, I think, you're even housing, so that basically the noise would be minimized in low decimal, uh, rate, and that's acceptable, you know, standards that are out there. Um, and, you know, the pumps themselves, you're not gonna really hear, that's, that's gonna happen during a storm event.
Yeah.
You know, so typically, people wouldn't be out, running around the area during a storm event, but, um, that'll help you beat that concern or minimize.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess my, my, my question is, in the event of that storm, in, in its, its loudest moment, right, am I gonna hear any more than I would from a neighbor if they were living in that house? At, you know.
Well, you, you could, but I, I don't think it's gonna be anything, uh, that would, but I mean, if I lived next to it, it wouldn't upset me, let's put it that way. Uh, and I don't think it would be anything, uh, ominous.
Just, we, we put in a generator at our, uh, Kirby Road pump station, and, uh, it, you know, unlike our first generator that we had, which you could hear, I mean, this was a much more powerful generator, this will be about a half that size of what we have at the pump station.
Approximately.
And, um, and we have, you know, we have not had noise issues. I think it's actually quieter than, you know, such, the smaller generators that you see out during the storm.
Yeah.
And again, the generator, the attendance for a failure of DTE power, so the hope is, you know, other than, uh, exercising the generator and testing it, it won't, it won't be utilized, it's just a security measure. Uh, the, the pumps themselves, again, like the pumps at our pumping station are below grade, they're, uh, so they're, they're in the ground below. So again, all these things help minimize, uh, 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 noise emission.
Any other questions or comments by council? Mr. Johnson.
I have to back up a lesson, I mean, it's beautiful. Actually, I make an offer, uh, but I would also go with Shane that we get security cameras on it, ubiquity, whatever we can tie into the system we currently have, and then a keypad system that logs, who goes in, what date, what time.
Yeah. You can do that.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments regarding the proposed site plan? Please come on up one at a time, name and address if you'd be so kind, please. Mr. Durvin.
I have to go six feet. One of the things is like, they see these drawings, but I really can't visualize this little bit. Um, Long County built a pump station in St. Clair Showers about twenty-five years ago, and it's designed to look like a ranch house. I looked at the design, they did the font, and they built it like a ranch on steroids, it was way out of proportion, it was terrible in the neighborhood. So I, I can't say, what is the height of this building gonna be? And is that, this person there somehow, this story, the windows are typical size, but don't simulate a height, how big is it?
About, well, the height is roughly about thirty.
It is, that's pretty tall. Miss Lars.
So I think at current ordinance, I, I think the, the maximum height is thirty feet to the midpoint of the roof, right?
Uh, depends on the type of roof, yeah.
Yeah, so it's
It's the big, this is, this is the big building. You don't realize that, that picture.
No.
So, so
Yeah, it's a good sized building.
And so also then it was, where's the, where do you enter the building from?
Side.
You can enter it from the front, you can also enter it from the side, and there's large doors on the side that can be used to pull pumps in and out of a facility for
Service, service access.
But if you just wanna walk in, you can be right through the, just like you would at your regular house.
Are those glass windows there, Tom?
They are glass, but they're not visions, you can't actually see.
Okay, so like they're, they're, could they be rolled easily? Okay, that's a concern of them. Now we have
There's, there's solid wall behind them, so they're just, they're just for looks.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, please come up, name and address, please.
Oh, yeah. My name is Jim West, I'm at three eighty La Ross, I'm the second house, so the pump station on La Ross. Yes, it looks fine. I have no problem with that. The problem is that two houses on Chalfont next to it are ranch houses. My next-door neighbor's house is a pitch house. My house is a ranch house, and the house that was there prior to this, lay a ranch house. Now, is the second floor usable for anything?
There, there is no second floor, it's just a little bit taller because of the Cape Cod style pitch of them.
So there are no pumps up there and
Pumps anywhere above.
So it's, it could be removed? No, we, we
Well, it's a little bit, there's adds.
I'll, I'll answer this one, so, um, we could build it as a ranch, unless it was a very odd-looking ranch. It either have to be a Cape Cod, uh, for the higher, uh, building heights, or, or a cloning. And the reason for that is because we've gotta pull these large pumps vertically up and out, and we've gotta get them out of the building. So a normal, uh, house that's got an eight or nine-foot ceiling, uh, wouldn't work. So we needed to have that, uh, additional height that you would get from a cloning or a Cape Cod, and that's why we use this here. So, but there are no other houses in the neighborhood area that look like this.
Uh, exactly.
How high up is the, uh, how many steps go up to the first floor?
Uh, I can't remember the exact number, but it's about three, four.
It will be higher than the house in the room. Get in.
Yeah, if your, if your porch is foot or two up front, it might be a little bit foot or two higher. Your porch.
That looks like, that looks The other space, and I think that'd be neat. The problem that I have is we're draining all the water off the streets, off the lawns, that contain oil and all the chemicals that they put in, and we're pumping it directly to the lake. Are we polluting the lake? Or is anything being filtered?
There'll be screens within the system, it'll be screened, but it's not unlike what we currently have through the rest of the city in our lakeside district. So we currently have storm sewers, uh, throughout the, the lakeside system and the county, like Lake Shore Road, County Road, that have catch basins that are collecting that stormwater from the, the roads, and it does go directly to the lake. Uh, this is just, this is doing the same thing, but it's collecting it in the inland district. The intent is to, you know, it's, it's, it's stormwater, not, not
Would be food later on.
Yeah, no.
Polluting.
Understood. The, you know, the issue obviously is, is, you know, the total objective is to get this, the, the cleaner, the stormwater of the, out of the combined, combined system, reduce the likelihood of putting in combined sewage into the lake, which is, which is much more environmentally, uh, 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 hard, uh, uh, impactful. And, and obviously, the, the greater thing is, is trying to reduce the likelihood, intensity of, of backup into basements of combined, uh, storm and sanitary sewage.
Now, that's fine. Now, another question. Since we're at the lower area of the farms, and I'm two houses away, heading to have generators, if something breaks down, will the water back up into my basement?
No, again, your existing system that we have now will be in place, this is just, this is adding an additional, uh, really, uh, facility to address stormwater. So whatever that, when that system run, it is taking that stormwater out of the system. There's also gonna be a, a, a rear, uh, of, of case, if it did go down, it would flow back to the Kirby Road pump station, is my understanding, correct, Tom?
The junction chamber, uh, that diverts the flow or to the pump station. As Shane was talking, it's basically got a, an overflow that can go back into the combined system if need be. For the pump station goes down, it, power goes out, and the generator doesn't work, you know. Everything that goes, could possibly go wrong, we try to build in an extra measure to minimize any impacts and, and that would eliminate the concern that you've got, so that basically it would just go back down into my system, if needed.
It's like, truly go on my basement flooded again, no, no, that's
Yeah, and, and that's the whole purpose of this project. Please remember that this project comes about as a result of a settlement in court of a class action lawsuit brought years ago by our residents against the city for basement flooding. And after years of engineering and design and collaboration with state and federal and local authorities and our good friends at Hubbell Rothman Clark, we believe there's gonna be a huge, huge percentage, uh, gain of the fact that basements aren't gonna flood in that neighborhood. We can't be any guarantees of that, of course, but we're talking eighty, ninety percent chance that basements aren't gonna flood in that neighborhood after these changes are put in. that basements aren't going to flood in that neighborhood after these changes are put into place so as to, uh, eliminate that possibility. And this was all in writing. The city, uh, committed to, uh, a very large pool of money back then as part of the settlement and payment of some cash to residents to do this project. And, uh, we think it's going to have tremendous effect. We think it's going to work. Like I'm pretty certain it's going to work. And like I said, generator for backup, additional safeguards behind that because these storms keep getting, uh, more intense, more intense all the time. And the city has another class action lawsuit that we're dealing with right now. So we hope that this is going to go a very, very long way in preventing basement flooding in Gross Point Farms.
When will this be active?
It's total construction, uh, we're, we're talking basically two years of, uh, construction. Uh, pump station and the actual physical separation of the southwest quadrant of, uh.
Just in my opinion, what's going on right now, I think they're doing fabulous job laying all the pipes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And cleaning everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, they slipped a long ways ago, but they're past mine.
So scared they're, they're moving ahead of schedule on, through the golf course. So it's good to see.
And I'm also known as the unofficial inspector nosing around what's going.
Good. Keep, keep nosing around and keep us posted.
Yes. Yes, we do need you.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I know there was another comment.
Hello, Ledgewood, I live at three eight eight Ross, which is right next to this project. I'm wondering, what are you going to do about any landscaping?
I'm going to meet with you and we're, we are, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna sit down, I want to sit down with you and your neighbor on Shell font and, uh, you know, the idea is, is, is to make sure we have good screening and, uh, and you're happy with, uh, the screening that, that gets planted there.
But you plan the landscaping?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
No, I think yes.
Sir.
Hi, I'm Phil Gerlach. I live in three seven two Shell font.
Mr. Gerlach, how do you spell G E R L A C H?
Got it.
Phil, thank you.
Sure. Um, first thing I want to say is I've lived in Gross Point my entire life. I'm seventy six years old. Ever since I can ever remember that house on the corner. That thing that used to be on the corner was either underwater, it looked like it came from the Beverly Hill Building. So it was that strange.
Skewer, yeah.
So this thing is like a dream compared to what the nightmare that we all remember from a long time ago. Um, and you know, living in Gross Point my whole life, um, I've always felt like Gross Point was unique in that all the houses didn't look like they were built by the same builder. So we have a variety of houses in Gross Point. So it doesn't bother me that this is a Cape Cod and there are ranches and there are colonials. And that's kind of what makes the neighborhood, I think, unique. I really believe that. Um, I also got a second letter. First I got the picture of this and I'm assuming this is facing Ross because we're talking about Ross. Um, did we ever look at having that face Shell font instead of Ross or face perpendicular or face kind of triangular to that? I, I'm, and I don't care either way. I was just curious.
I think we did. It's a weird lot, as you know, it's kind of a pie shape.
Yeah.
And so in order to, you know, really, if you shift it, you're not going to get a, a ninety degree angle on either Ross or Shell font. So we felt that, that location and, and for the neighbors too aesthetically, it, you, neither of the neighbors looking directly at a backyard, the rear, it's, uh, it's at the back of the property.
And I also got a second letter that said that someone would be giving me a call or coming by to talk about Shell font because I'm assuming you guys are going to be doing something on Shell font too. I don't know, are you putting new sewers in on Shell font? Or I suspect you might be coming across my grass. That's why I'm asking.
Sure. So we will be getting, that will be, there's really three phases to the project. We talked about the, the, the force main and gravity main, the pump station, uh, the, the, the third division is the actual separation. And, and for those homeowners on Shell font, um, we're going to need to be tying in your sanitary, uh, line from your home into a new sanitary line at Shell font. So it's going to involve tapping into your existing sanitary and reconnecting to the new sanitary because the old combined system now, that interceptor is going to be solely dedicated for storm sewer.
And I do have a sewer right in the middle of my grass, so I suspect that's where you're going to tap.
I probably somewhere around there. Well, yeah, we'll have to figure out where that lead drops and that's where we'll be connecting.
Okay. But I'm assuming once you do that, you'll fix everything.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Sean, can I make a, a follow on?
Yes, sir. Mr. Wood.
Everybody knows we've had, uh, 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 finishing, we finished up the project, this portion of the project on, on Tonon Court just last week. And so I, I made it my business to call a couple of our friends who live on Tonon Court and asked about the project. The number one thing that stood out to me and the thing that they valued the most was the email blast, the communication that we had, not only with the city and our residents, but also the contractors and from our friends at HRC. The feedback that I have gotten, um, has, has been nothing but good. And, um, I would hope that we would continue that to continue our email blasts. They're, they're valuable, they're looked at, you know? And, um, I think that you folks who are on the corner and then going up Shell font are going to be part of this whole thing. So we're going to be talking about that in the future, but rest assured, communication has been a number one thing for our administration and for our engineers. And apparently for DePoneo, they've been very, very, very responsive to homeowners. And I think that should be a, uh, hopefully give you confidence, uh, everybody here, give you confidence that this will be a very well managed project. Some things were going to go wrong, but, um, for the most part, it's going to be, you're going to know about who's doing what when, right, through our email blasts.
Thank you. Uh, any, anyone else from the public, if you'd be so kind, come on up, sir, please.
I live at three fifty nine Shell font, so across the street. I just had a quick question. You guys talked about the, uh, the generator, what would make sense from the other back behind that? I was just wondering if as part of this process, if you've studied the failure that happened, most recent flood we had, the one that happened, the pump station in Detroit failed, banked?
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if you guys have studied that and if, if the plan you outlined mitigates whatever that failure was.
Can't speak to that failure, fortunately, but, uh, you, um, like a better, you're saying that's now the ball suspension system. In regards to, he got a primary power from the DTE, we've got a backup, secondary power from the generator down right at the station. On the worst case, if they hold them down, it's just then basically goes back to where it's going to the station, but it's got nowhere to go because the station's down already. It'll head up and that's what the chain is bringing about. It'll overflow back from the buying system and go downstream to the Kirby station. So we, we try to account for all those, uh, measures, if you will, to mitigate any problems that might come up. And, uh, that's the game.
I think, yes. And I think, I, I think if you're talking specifically about, uh, the food station and the, and the Great Lakes Water Authority, I, I don't believe in that case there was a backup generator to that facility.
No. Can you spell your last name for him, Mr. Kazia?
Sorry. T A C C I A.
T A Z Z I A. Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve, uh, the site plan for the proposed pump station at three, three fifty two Shell font, please. Councilman Soroka.
Second.
Supported by council member, uh, Jensen. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You might want to make sure that's included as part of the motion. It's just for the record.
Fair enough. Well, why don't you, would you like, I'm sorry, I was not aware that you were ready to make a motion on this?
They, they realize.
No, we didn't know, yes.
Okay.
Bill, it's okay.
I'll accept a friendly amendment to my motion. Why don't you, uh, read your proposed motion?
I have a short one too, but this one has recommendations of which some of the neighbors mentioned. Uh, I included, included, wrote that down.
Fair enough.
Here we go. Uh, site plan review with recommendations, three five two Shell font. Stormwater pump station site plan review. I move that the city council approve the plan review, site plan review for the city-owned property located at three five two Shell font for the construction of a stormwater pump station as a conditional use within the R one double A zoning district based on the following findings. The proposed use is permitted as a conditional use pursuant to section four zero one parentheses one of the zoning ordinance. The site plan complies with all applicable development standards under section thirteen hundred, including lot size and width, lot coverage, front side and rear setback, maximum building height. Architectural design is residential in character and compatible with surrounding neighborhood. The facility serves a necessary public infrastructure function and supports the city's approved sewer separation program. The project previously received conceptual approval and the present application represents the final site and design compliance phase. The application has been reviewed by who recommended approval. Now, these are the recommendations if accepted, non conditional. As part of this approval and in the interest of neighborhood compatibility, operational excellence and long-term asset stewardship, city council offers the following non binding field recommendations for staff consideration. Would that be correct?
I had to hear before I knew what.
Well, at least this part, okay. Number one, that enhanced landscaping and buffering be utilized for feasible. That all exterior lighting be shielded downward, directed in residential scale. That noise and vibration mitigation be employed consistent with best engineering cert practices. That nearby residents be kept informed regarding construction, staging hours and access impacts. That exterior materials remain consistent with the Cape Cod residential design character presented. That facility be included in the city's regular landscape and exterior, exterior maintenance cycle. I think there were a few other ones. We had security features of security being solved to see who's coming and going and a keypad to log who's entering and exiting. I believe that's it.
We have a valid motion, Mr. Burgess.
Yeah, no, the question of binding versus non binding, as long as the city manager is prepared to accept those conditions, I think they ought to be considered binding.
I'm proud of those conditions.
Okay.
Is there support for the amended motion?
Yes.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Question from Ms. West.
Come on up, Mr. West.
Well, I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
The sidewalks at the three fifty two Shell font, um, Ross and Shell font are a disaster. They have been for years with all these trucks coming in and going out. I know you can't improve, but the sidewalks will be brand new at some point in time?
We will, we will take care of those sidewalks, yes.
Secondly, all the herbivites at that location are on county property, not city property. Should they be in a county property? If I put something there.
Well, they're back behind the sidewalk. There's a bright way.
But county line is still part of the odds.
Yeah, I don't think it's, yeah, it's, it's, I don't think it's an issue with the county. I think the question is, we know, we'll want to look at that. It's, everybody doesn't look set. It may make sense to reduce the height. There may be some things we can do to aesthetically make it look better.
Okay, I want to make sure the sidewalks are new.
We will take care of your sidewalk.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pitts, come on up, please. Name and address again, please, sir.
Four Shell font, speaking of sidewalks.
We're, we're, what's related? Mr. Pitts, with due respect, we're related to this project right now in common. You're free to come up later and talk about sidewalks.
Sidewalks, getting that stuff for, for, for years, I told me to. They, a couple of them was in front of my house.
Yeah, we just looked at that a couple of weeks ago and, and we are going to address that, Mr. Pitts.
Trigger and walk every day. Walking their dog over, elderly people walks and right in front of my house and a few feet from my house with a tree and can't who's there and lifted cement up. It needs to be fixed. I paid, had two slabs done out of my pocket.
Thank you.
I'm waiting on the city to take care of these other.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion from council? All in favor of the amended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all very much. Well done. Thank you. Next, uh, entertain a motion to recess the city council and convene as the, uh, board of zoning appeals to, uh, tend to agenda item, item number five. Is there such a motion, please?
Yes, I'll make that.
Council member Wood, is there support?
Support.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're now convened as the board of zoning appeals. Mr. Baca, will you please take the podium and first address the proposal at two, three, one Lake Shore Drive, the dimensional variance request before we invite, uh, the homeowner up?
Sure. So we received an application, a building permit application to build a pool.
Excuse me, folks. Excuse me, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pitts.
Uh, we received a building permit application to construct a pool in the front open space of two thirty one Lake Shore Drive. The zoning ordinance does not allow pools in the front open space. So as a result, we informed the applicant that in order to, to achieve with their project, they would need a variance. Uh, they did some, submitted an application for variance. Um, the pool would be located seventy five feet from the front property line, which is the required setback for a structure in that zone district, so on triple A, or double A, rather. Uh, however, because it is a pool, it's an accessory structure, it still requires a variance. As I stated in my memo, uh, there's also a water main there in the front yard, which was, uh, took a lot of research to kind of try and get our mind around what's going on that it's approximately at least a ninety year old water. Because we know that was there ninety years ago when there was, Lake Shore Road was moved from above the water main to closer to the shore. So at that time, there was a, a sort of document filed with Wayne County Register D saying that the city had the right to access that water main. Um, and I reviewed with the city attorney, so if I'm misstating any of this, please correct me. Um, but at this point, so that is the, the variance that they have requesting is to build a pool in the front of the space.
Thank you. Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Potton? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
Fine, how are you, sir? Name and, uh, address and, uh, who you're here for tonight, please.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, members of the council. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Tim Pottan, Stonefield Engineering Design, Department of Design for, for this project located at five 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 South Old Woodward, Birmingham, Michigan. Also a dwelling as the homeowner for the first time in my twenty year career. So I'm going to try to.
Wear two different hats.
Yeah. So thanks for having us. As Matt stated, I moved, I purchased this home about a year and a half ago. Really happy to be part of this community and, you know, we're looking at, the house has really good bones. We love the piece of property, but we're getting ready to do a pretty extensive. Piece of property, but we're getting ready to do a pretty extensive. Remodel on the hole and this is kind of one of the first driving factors to try to. Figure out how all pieces are fall, so. You know, we do have a pretty unique piece of property and, uh, you can see we have frontage on Lake Shore, but then we also have frontage on Harbor Hill. So you have to, we don't have any access to our home on Lake Shore, so you pull around. Harbor Hill and then you would make a right, then you end up, which is actually the front of our house, so along Harbor Hill is the garage. And the front door and the back of the house actually is the Lake Shore side. So it's a little bit of a unique situation. The second aspect of that. Is that the home and the entire lot, there's an eight foot wall at the front of the property. And then there's about four feet of hedge row shrubs. So this would be the view as you're traveling south. Along Lake Shore, you can see that you can't even see the first floor of the entire home. So you can really go and see, this is the second level. Of the home. So any activities and anything that would take place would be completely, this is a little bit. Further north as you're driving down, this is probably the part where you can, you can see the most visually. As you're driving down the street.
Turnaround show to the members of the public who are here as well, please, for their benefit, if you would, sir. Thank you, sir.
So we've got an eight foot wall, talking to eight to nineteen with another three to four foot of shrub. There's absolutely no visibility from the road and you really can't. Tell what's going on in the lot, so there would be visibility for one property that would be to see a pool here and that would be. My neighbor right here to the south would be the only person that could see it. We have had a couple of meetings discuss this. And he, you know, they're okay ultimately with the pool and with the proposal. Now, so purchased, purchased this house from. The, so the previous homeowner moved into the house next door, so we have a very good. Uh, working relationship. It's a pretty small pool relatively because we didn't want to ask for an additional variance. So we were very careful in placing the pool within. The allowable building setback, so we could actually do an addition onto the house. And put a building there. I'm seeking to do that. We also didn't want to stretch it into seventy five foot setback, but it does leave us with a. Pretty skinny little fifteen foot pool, but you know, I think it's enough with. Having the challenges that we're having as much as I do want a pool for myself, is anytime we invite everybody over. In the summer, obviously it's beautiful, it's hot, they see the water, everybody wants to go on the water. And we've had some challenges last year. I can't forget the holidays that we had some people over and the Rose Point Farm's park is, is closed down due to bacteria and there's other things going on. So I think just to be able to provide a safe environment, our own yard, kids and everything else. Uh, you know, I think would, would really give us a good level of comfort overall, so. We wanted to get the conversation going, see how the board's felt about it and then we feel that this is a unique situation. Due to the, the fact that there's no visibility and we're eight feet higher onto the road. We'd be within the allowable building setback. And our, the two neighbors to the north also have pools located in the front yard. Now, their scenario is a little bit different because their, their yard is a lot larger than mine. The pools are pushed back. Um. A lot further into the yard, albeit the difference is they do have access on Lake Shore, it's in the driveway. And the pools are at approximately the same level as Lake Shore, they're just very large firms. They're so far ahead, you can't see them, but you know, there are pools in the front yards along Lake Shore, two of these probably. So here to get the discussion started, introduce myself to you guys. See what everybody thinks.
Questions or comments from council? Mr. Wood?
Uh, thank you very much for coming.
So for having me.
It's an interesting project. Um. You probably have had experience with variance requests in the past and you know that we need to have a practical difficulty explained. You need to explain to us your practical difficulty in terms of, of putting this pool in, in, um. Front yard, which, um. You know, is, is, uh. It, well, it's very important for us to understand how it is that you expect that, you know, we're going to pass this without a practical difficulty. So could you explain to us? What is, what is your practical difficulty putting the pool at the location, the hot tub and the patio? And the location that you're proposing it?
Yeah, I think the hardship is the unique shape and orientation of the property and the fact that. We don't have a traditional rear yard. There's no rear yard here to, to place a pool. So I think that's the practical difficulty here. It has a unique shape, so biography of, uh, the orientation of the setbacks.
And would, would you, in your view, say that, um, having a pool at this particular location is harmonious? With, uh, the other properties in the neighborhood?
Yeah, I think it's absolutely harmonious. Like I mentioned, uh, you know, there's, there's a pool to the two neighboring homes. To the north of me as well. But I do think that it's harmonious. I also think that, you know, it's, it's almost so skinny and that it could be used as a landscaping feature, you know, we're not really not looking to go. Have a big deep diving type of pool or anything like that, so. If you look at a little rectangle, you know, it goes from like twelve feet to fifteen feet, which is really very, very thin in terms of, of the width.
And i- in your view, is your practical difficulty, uh, self-created?
The, the practical difficulty is not self-created and, uh, again, we don't have a rear yard and no rear yard. And or side yard on the slot located on the slot for us to be able to follow this, this.
Okay. One last question.
First.
Our attention on the, uh, the issue that Matt mentioned, um, there is a, unusually, uh, there is a, uh. A water main that goes, uh, across your property here. Uh, it, it, and, uh, the easement that, uh, that it is. It's nowhere near where you're going to be building your, your property. So I want to be clear that you're not violating either your, your setback or you're not violating the easement. That's the, I'm looking at an overhead view of your, of your house here. Um, this is a, Matt, I think he said like it's a ninety year old water. Many of our water mains don't have that long life. Um, they break, right? So if they break, we got to come in and we've got to fix it. If you've got your, um, patio, you've got your hot tub and you've got your new pool right in the way. And we cannot, uh, for one reason or another, bring proper equipment and to fix it, we're gonna. We're gonna, we're gonna wreck your. Your stuff, okay? I mean, I don't know how to say it, but you're gonna. There's going to be problems. We're going to be breaking because how, how else can we get back there to fix the main, right? So, uh, it has been suggested that, so that we ask you to, um, uh, enter into an agreement with the city, but. Our attorney with, and it's Shane and all will, will, and you will, will, you know, put together that will hold us harmless from any of those, um. Uh, disturbances on your new infrastructure. Are you okay with? Now, you know, I've got a, I've got a motion that includes some language, but it would be up to you guys to figure it out, but. In general, are you, are you okay with? The whole harmless. Agreement keeping the city off the hook for, not for the repair, the, 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 the broken main, we'll fix that, but. For any of the, the broken patio and, you know, hot tub needs to be fixed and stuff.
Yeah, I think the, the short answer is yes, and I'm okay with that. I guess just to give a little bit of. A feel good about it, we, you know, Matt and I have talked a lot of times this week and trying to figure out what's going on with that. Old water main was a fun little mystery that we uncovered, but it's, it's about twenty five feet at the closest location of, of the pool. So I estimate that that line is pretty deep, actually. I think it's probably ten to twelve feet deep. Uh, with that being said, to really get to that line in the type of soil that we're expecting, you would need. Probably about eighteen to twenty feet on each side of it. So I think we would still avoid, maybe not my, her, her paper patio or something like that, but. The good news, I think we avoided the pool and again, I'm not looking to go so deep, so when we construct a pool, I don't think we have any impact whatsoever because I think. Water line is deep enough that, in the reverse situation, as long as someone. I'm willing to sign into a whole harmless, I would like to maybe discuss. You know, the type of construction measures we're going to take prior to someone just going in there, going wild, but. However, that would also make plays.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Ritchie.
I think part of the problem is that, that there is no easement written down. So ninety years ago, it, the water mains there and I'm like you said. Eighteen to twenty inches feet on both sides is probably what you would need based on how deep it is. So we need enough language in there to cover the worst possible scenario for you and for us. So I'm going to make sure that everybody understands there is no easement on that piece right now.
Yeah, I, I mean. We've read it a lot of times in the past week and it's, it's actually. More so that the easement width or location isn't described, but it does basically say. The city has to come through here for any reason, for any infrastructure, we're coming. So it's kind of like the whole property is almost an easement, I think. Uh, that's kind of how it reads. So there's, there's not an exact location of an easement, but the city has the rights to come in.
Right. And you're aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Jensen, we're getting back this way.
Bill, do you have anything to add to that at all?
Only confirming what we've already said, which is that it's not a classic grant of a new easement. Instead, it's a reservation of rights in favor of the city. Which has been noted in the reported plat. At the time, the Lake Shore Drive was relocated closer to the water's edge. And the, the, that's okay, that protects the city. The issue is that there's no meets and bounds. Identification of exactly where that main traverses your front yard.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the front yards of your neighbors at same stretch. Um, and, you know, because of that, we have to be a little, um. Flexible in terms of. Um, understanding how your new patio, brick pavers, pool. Hot tub, infrastructure in theory might be impacted by a break.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Jensen.
Did you contact your neighbors?
Involved neighbors all under area there. I did, so like I had mentioned, I purchased the house from my neighbor to the south. They're okay with it. They're probably the only ones. That would see it and then my neighbor to the north recently just sold his house. And I'm also know the people that purchased that home and I don't think that they're long-term holders, but they were also okay with it.
Do you need any kind of, uh, approval or guidance, guidelines, et cetera, from the Harbor Hill Association?
So I know that I noticed one out because I was on the email distribution list for the Harbor Hill Association and. Don't see anybody here tonight, but I'm sure they have compliance with the rules of the association.
Okay, Matt, I think if you, uh, suggest whoever's president, I think you should check on that. Uh, another thing that I noticed was the three examples that you used for front, uh, yard pools. Only one is front yard pool. Elm Court's rear yard pool. Uh, Caber's old house is a side yard pool. Edsel Ford's is a front yard pool that's all the way up by his house, probably four times the distance from the Lake Shore sources. Uh, the other thing I met today with Larry Tucker from Art Tucker Excavation Company that does all of our water main breaks. I showed him quickly the plans. We had a discussion on getting equipment in there because obviously we're not going to get that equipment in there if there's a failure. Uh, from Lake Shore. Uh. By the side of, on your side both ways, he needs a minimum of eight to twelve feet. Get any kind of construction equipment in there. It's going to destroy the size of your houses to get back there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the other thing he had a good point was, was we don't know what the soil sample is there. So if you have a break twenty feet away. If it's sandy soil, it might invade all the way to your pool. Um, and wash your pool out. Uh, the other thing I have a problem is if, if and when you get married, I believe, move on and move away. Um, and you go to sell the house, does that guarantee that the people who buy it are going to indemnify us, let us own their property and. Uh, such and such.
As Councilman Wood will back me up, our discussion of this is that. The old harmless would have to run with the land and bind successive property owners. We don't really have any choice but to do without.
And the reason I asked on the neighbor thing, I did speak to a couple of your neighbors, one in particular. And, uh, there was some concern. Uh, of the partying that goes on now. I mean, you're a young guy, a young girlfriend, it's a beautiful home. Um, I don't know why they built those two houses facing back avenue. Like I say that facing to the, the west instead of facing these, that's not my concern. Uh, so technically that's your backyard and everybody else's front yard. Uh, there isn't a whole lot of precedent at the front yard. I can only think of Edsel Ford's and again, it's three to four times the location where yours is close to Jefferson. I grant it, the elevation and the walls beautiful, you may not see it from the road, that's great. My concern is that a ninety plus year old water main, if it goes, there's going to be some damage done to your property if you get to it. He needs at least eight foot, that's with a ditch which, and at least twelve feet with a bucket. Um, and to get back there, the Lord knows if there's any washout inside, as a homeowner, if I live there, I'd be concerned about the washout because. If you're in a sandy enough soil, that washout could go for fifty, seventy five, a hundred feet. Everything just starts sinking on you, so. They'll, they'll, that's my concern, um. I, I'm with, I don't know why they built those two houses, yours and your neighbor's, facing the other way. They shouldn't, you know, probably they built them bad for them, the water's beyond me. Um, but those are my concerns, particularly in getting, uh, construction equipment in to a ninety plus year. Water main, it's going to be difficult. It can't be right on the lake shore.
Thank you, Mr. Soroka.
Personally, I, I'm concerned about the precedent established with this. I know technically there is no precedence established by variances, but inevitably. The city council looks to past decisions and how we've looked at it. Um, and I know. I was trying to find the, the most recent one, but we, we did talk about having a pool, uh, just a few months ago on, would have, yeah, and we, and we did not support that simply because. We didn't want to have those sorts of things in the front yards and so. You know, honestly, driving past it, I can see exactly your point that you can't see it from the roadway, the next door neighbor wouldn't see it. And I, you know, there is a compelling argument in the, the fact that there isn't a self-created problem in, insofar as you don't have a backyard. At the same time, as I said during that, that, that past, uh, uh, hearing. Um, we have to think not just about this individual decision, but how the decisions we make will, 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 uh, impact, uh, future decisions down the road. And, and that's ultimately my concern here, um, is, is. When the next person comes to us wanting to put a pool in the front yard, um, will we have the ability to say no when it, it, it doesn't have some of these features like this particular instance?
If I could touch on, I think those two points. You know, the first one, um, as it relates to construction equipment, what it would take and overflow and things of these nature. Now, obviously my, my real concern is you're mentioning, the entire yard is. Going to get dug up. We're going to have huge problems. I mean, I'm really more worried about my basement and my foundations. At that point, and a lot more worried about my building and my structure. So if you want to add the little. Fifteen foot pool to it, you know, it's like. Really not that big of a concern at that point. And if, you know, I mean that humble kind of way, but I think we're in a bigger issues. That we have to worry about at that point and, and I also agree with you, um. In terms of setting a precedent, but you know, if, if that wasn't a concern. The only precedent that we're really, that we're really sending is that. You would have to be located at least ten feet off of the road in terms of the block, the property with a brick wall. No access located on Lake Shore. The front of your house also could not be facing Lake Shore. So if you actually look at the criteria that we meet and you look at the number of properties that want Lake Shore that actually could potentially fit this criteria. I don't know that you're necessarily setting a precedent that all, all of a sudden means that every single person along Lake Shore that wants a pool just comes in and says that. Oh, well, you gave it to this person, because I do think that we have, uh, some pretty unique circumstances here. I mean, I, I, and I completely agree with you. I tried to touch on it because I, I don't want to compare myself to. I think you said of our van or, or, I don't know, it's, or, or two forty, or before you looked at. Um, because it is a lot further away, but I did touch on, they do have access on Lake Shore. And their pool is at the same level as their boat. Almost, so the unique case that we have is that we don't have access on Lake Shore and are elevated. Over ten feet. They have the distance. I, I completely agree, so I don't think it's a direct comparison, so I tried to touch on that a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, um, I have two questions. So has there ever been, um, servicing to the, a need to service the water main, ever?
Uh, this may, since it's been inside, now that I'm aware of.
But it.
We did have one at Beacon Hill, I think three or four years ago where there was some other work going on and then the water main got undermined. And so the city had to go in and that I think why the water department is so concerned about this in particular is because of that experience. And it wasn't sand and they had to make this huge hole to fit to get to this, you know, so that's, you know, anytime we're this close to some of these types of utilities, we try to run by all the relevant departments. And that was like, that was their, and their, a different example of what could happen.
And that was a little bit different in that that exposed hole was, the, the, the main actually became exposed as a result of the work they were doing.
That an outside contractor was doing. So the water main itself was, didn't bring, it was damaged by an outside contractor.
Correct.
But still to get to which is very difficult.
And we did, just in terms of the, the plans too, we did, I mean, one positive thing, we did actually with new equipment that we purchased in the water department where we were able to uh, put a current through that main to, to, to actually trace it. Um, it, it was back.
Fifty feet from the, from the front property line, so twenty-five feet away from that, very close to such. Which was subject to, you know, we weren't exactly sure where the water main was, so that, that was.
So it was back a little bit further than we originally thought from the pool.
My second comment more than a question is, you really are okay with if we have to service that line, right? And we really have to come in and tear everything up? You really are okay with that? Today?
Maybe it's because it's my profession, but if eight-inch water main fixed, I'm almost willing just to say we can inspect it and not fix it down, relocate it, just to do the pool. But I really don't want to say that because if it's not broken, we shouldn't go and start messing with things. But you know, of course, if we don't identify that there's a leak for a long period of time, which I think is unlikely, then it could cause damage. But, but these are not like, this, this is pipe, this is bed. You know, it's really not, it's a little bit deeper than I wish that it was, but this is not a big, big fix. If it gets undermined through the reconstruction, it's not a planned project, of course, it's very different, but. All right, no, I, I have not.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
All right. Yeah, after I, if, well, go ahead, Mr. President. We're going to limit to one each next, please.
I'd like to comment on what Neil said. In terms of precedent, uh, Neil, I'm not sure if you were on the board or not at this time, but uh, several years ago, we had a project proposal just south of this property at uh, uh, Briarwood.
Were you there?
Yeah. So what they wanted to do there was very different here. And so that just exemplifies the fact that every case is different, but in their particular case, they wanted to put a swimming pool on top of water main and they wanted to violate a setback. So they were doing a couple of bad things. So we said, no, you can't do this. Here we're not, here, th- this is very different, right? So while it, it, it might on this, it might superficially seem like it's the same thing. Really, when you get to the, when you analyze the facts, it's not, it's not, it's not saying, um, there's no in- intrusion into the, into the setback here as we've discussed. So I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And Sierra, I don't remember if you were around.
I wasn't, yes, thank you.
That was, uh, that was a case where we said, no, you can't. Sorry, John.
No, no, thank you. Uh, Mr. Panton, I'm, uh, appreciative of you being here. I'm appreciative of you making a nice investment in our community. Uh, are you long-term here? You don't, uh, we're not going to see a for sale sign on that house in the next twenty-four months, are we, sir?
You're not going to see a for sale sign on the house in the next twenty-four months, based on the investment that I'm making.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Just asking. Good. I'd entertain a motion with regard to the proposed variance requested two, three, one, Lake Shore.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, two things first. One, you need to ask and see if there's.
I, I'm sorry, you're right.
And then there's a procedural point as well.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this agenda item, please? Thank you, Mr. Burgess. No public comment, Mr. Burgess.
Okay, so the procedural point, um, you have only six members of the board that are here tonight because this is a variance. You would need approval to have five affirmative votes. So, uh, I'm not in the business of reading tea leaves, but you need to be aware that you would need to have those five votes. If you wanted to wait until we had a full slate of seven uh, members of the board, that's your prerogative to table this until that happens.
I think let's just see what happens and whatever community wants will get you something on, right?
Fair enough. It's a motion. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Please.
It's a bit long, so please hang in there with me. Uh, I move the appeal of Mr. Tim Ponton, owner of a property located at two thirty-one Lake Shore Road. That be granted, thereby authorizing issuance of a building permit to construct a building addition, including a swimming pool, hot tub, pool deck patio and a four-foot tall fence surrounding the deck and the patio. The variance would allow for the pool and other permanent structures to be located in the property's front yard. All work will conform with the submitted plans from Stonefield Engineering and Design, date stamped October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. In making this decision, the board has reviewed a report from McKenna dated November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, a memo from Matthew Baffa dated December eighth, twenty twenty-five, zoning board of appeals application submitted by the owner dated August eighth, and the architectural plan, uh, plan submitted by the applicant. The variance is granted on the basis that there is that strict application of the zoning ordinance uh, would result in a practical difficulty for the user of the property due to the fact that there is no room for the construction of the property other than the proposed location. According to the applicant, the shape and orientation of the lot is unique in that it borders Lake Shore Road, yet it does not provide direct access from that side. As a result, the home's main entrance, driveway, garage are oriented toward Harbor Hill. Rear house faces Lake Shore Road. Uh, we agree with the applicant that the unique shape and orientation of the lot eliminate possibility of a traditional rear yard leaving no place to put the additions. Practical difficulty is not self-created when considering the unique lot shape and absence of a traditional re- rear yard. The extent of the variance in relation to the ordinance is substantial. The request amounts basically to a variance of the entire requirement that no structure to be built in the front yard, but the proposed patio and the accessory structures do not exceed the maximum lot coverage and are to be located outside of the front, outside of the seventy-five-foot setback. The variance is in, is in harmony with and serves the intended purpose of the ordinance. Property is, is hidden from view from Lake Shore Road and is located at the end of the cul-de-sac out of view of any motorists or pedestrians on Harbor Hill. Numerous homes on Harbor Hill and surrounding blocks have hot tubs and swimming pools. The variance allows construction that will be harmonious with the surrounding properties. The variance will result in substantial justice being done because the hardship suffered. If a variance is not granted, would mean the homeowner is denied a benefit available to residents in his neighborhood. Practical difficulty cannot be obviated by some method other than variance. There have been no letters of objection received from the neighboring property owners. Due to the relative hidden nature of the proposed project, the variance will not substantially impact, excuse me, interfere with, uh, with or injure the rights of owners. Uh, no additional government resources will be needed due to this variant. Uh, conditions, number one, the applicant will indicate to city staff that proposed fence material, it's under, it's our understanding that that's not been, um, uh, uh, stated. So, uh, if acceptable, staff will, our staff, city staff will approve this material administratively. Um, the homeowner will indemnify the city of any costs associated with incursion into the pool area, patio and hot tub area. In the event that water main maintenance, repair or replacement becomes necessary, no construction on the site will be permitted until this indemnification has been approved by the city attorney, city staff. That is my motion.
We have a valid motion? We do. Is there support for Mr. Woods' motion? Ms. Donovan, Mr. Ritchie. Any further discussion by counsel?
Yeah.
Mr. Soroka.
I wonder if there is, um, listening, thank you, uh, Councilmember Wood for your very good motion. I'm wondering if there might be some ability to add an amendment to it, uh, speaking to the home, requiring the homeowner to maintain the, um, eight-foot masonry wall and, uh, the effective screening on both sides of that wall. Because one of the things, again, thinking about the issue of long-term, i- if we were, if we were to approve this, what I'd want to do is, is ensure that one of the things that makes this permissible, in addition to the fact that there is no rear yard setback, is the fact that there is effective screening and you aren't having bathers on Lake Shore Drive, um, visible from, you know, I, 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 I don't necessarily want to see.
Especially his.
I don't want to see all bathers, um, uh, uh, when I'm driving down Lake Shore. So I wonder if there is some way that we could.
So let's, um, Bill, how can we frame a, uh, how can we frame a thoughtful condition, given that Neil is concerned about um, privacy and maintaining of that fence and that, that wall and, and, and the, the vegetation, the landscaping, how can we?
Neil, you want to add more than what's already there?
Yeah, I wonder if there could be a, as a, a approval of this variance, it's subject to the following conditions. One could be the homeowner will maintain the existing, um, eight-foot masonry wall that runs, uh, that runs along Lake Shore Road and, um, and the, the screening that is exist, the existence.
That, to me, that seems reasonable, Bill. Does that seem like a reasonable condition?
I think the applicant's raising his eyebrow. Probably must say something, which is.
Mr. Ponton, please. Sir.
So my, my house, the finished floor of the first part of my home is located, I mean, it's elevated about eight to nine feet higher than Lake Shore. So no matter what, there has to be an eight-foot elevation. Maybe a different option would be a burn, but even if it burned up, it couldn't burn back down, have to stay up. Uh, I'm very happy to meet everything that you're suggesting. The only thing that I can say is that I share in that wall with my neighbor, the Mattises. And, you know, I'm happy to keep a wall and I'm happy to keep the landscaping and whatnot. I think it's maybe Matt mentioned, it's newer, I think. I'm not sure. I think Matt had mentioned it, it's newer. I'm happy to do that. I don't want to speak for the neighbor.
So Neil, maybe the way to articulate this and be loud with you would be that the applicant will commit to maintaining privacy screening of a magnitude that's not less
than that fee.
Uh, you know, favorable than the current screening and, you know, will replace anything that is deteriorated or lost to maintain that level of screen.
So the applicant will commit to maintaining privacy screening, uh, that is not less than the current ten feet on both, um, on, on both Lake Shore and the northern side of the, the property. Does that work?
It's definitely along Lake Shore. Northern side of the property is, is.
What is that now?
Verus.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, like, how do we?
I think you did it with regard to Lake Shore.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's the big
Okay.
hurdle here. If Mr. Woods willing to accept your.
Yeah, I'm willing to accept that. That sounds like a good, yeah.
Is it, is it support for the amendment?
Support.
Mr. Jensen?
Is there a way for I vote? I would love to have a soil sample done just because of the history of Lake Shore and the soil around it, such as Beacon Hill. Um, and or, and a visual inspection of a ninety, ninety-five-year-old water main. I think we're, I think to protect Mr. Ponton, homeowner, and to protect the city, it would be he must to have a soil sample done and an inspection of some type on a ninety-five-year-old water main. Otherwise, we're in for, he's in for a hell of an investment. We are. To get to it, to fix it, it's going to be really tough to do. Um, is there any way we can incorporate that into the motion?
You're not going to get a soil sample if you're going to vote tonight.
Yeah. And if the main breaks, you get the same problem now, you do without the pool, with the, with the. Well, no, yeah, it breaks down, but after he completes spending thirty, forty thousand, fifty thousand, whatever it's going to be on a pool and a patio. And also the main breaks that washes it out, we're going, I thought we were worried about that. I just think it's, it, it, it's just a little, that's the only part I don't like. I think the, the screening is great. I think the wall is great. I, I, I appreciate everything Neil just added to it. I think that's, my concern is a potential fall off. That's, that's, that's my concern, so. I'm, I'm, I would be concerned actually trying to expose that main right now because of the age of it and we could, you know, actually do more damage than good by trying to expose it. But, and I, I could pretty much assure you that that there's going to be quite a bit of sand. That's, that soil is very sandy towards the lake, so you will have that. Uh, most likely, if there's a water main break, what we would do is we would isolate that break very quickly, as quickly as possible to shut down that. So you're not continuing to wash it. You may, you may need to, to bring in pounding. You may have to bring some sheeting and drive that sheeting adjacent to the, that main, uh, just to, you know, so you're to hold back that earth, uh, and, and be able to tack it that way. Um, but, uh, you know, I think there's, 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 there are risks, there are always risks. Uh, you know, I think we're a little bit more comfortable now that we know at least we have twenty-five feet from the pool area. Um, and most likely if it washes out, it's going to be washing towards Lake Shore as opposed towards the house.
To be, and to be clear, right, we have some indemnification.
Everybody do have indemnification. So if that does happen, they would be responsible for, we, we will be held liable for, for the damage.
Well, just so that the record is clear on this, and I do think that the applicant understands this, but the indemnity and hold harmless provision that we would have to enter into before construction commenced, um, would be broad enough to indicate that if there is a break in the main and to gain access to repair that break will require that there be some impairment up to and including full demolition of, you know, some portion of the patio or other infrastructure, but that's not going to be at the city's expense, be at the homeowner's expense. The city's expense to actually repair the break. But the, the negative economic impact on dealing with the infrastructure that you're going to um, improve your property, that's going to be at your cost. As long as there's understanding on that, that I think it covers your point.
And that continues on with the property. It's not limited to, so I'll just reiterate that.
Well, to touch on that point, I thought we were doing indemnification as it related to this project, which is the patio and the pool. So without any of this, right now, if there's a water main break and the city comes in and they start driving equipment everywhere and demolition and everything else, I'm thinking that I'm not paying for all of that. I'm dealing with the headache, but I'm not paying for it. So as it relates to the whole harmless, I thought it would be related to this project and the pool and the deck and whatever else goes in, like not all of the demo that goes on on the entire property.
No, 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 I think you're correct. It's, it's limited to the new infrastructure that you're asking permission to build now.
Right.
And if any of that infrastructure is impaired, that's your cost.
Right. Yeah.
It's, it's narrow to that extent.
Right.
The language we have now is sufficient to express that.
Okay.
All right, we have an amended motion. Do I, is there, do we have another? Do we have another condition on my thing? I, I, I forget.
Well, I don't think so. I think someone Jensen wanted to think about.
All right.
Did he have additional investigation before
Okay.
approving this or not? And I think you're you're going to vote one way or another.
Right.
I think you're, you understand that it's the applicant's cost and we have to bust down.
We have an amended motion that's been supported. Uh, there being no further discussion, Mr. Kuzicki, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wood. Yes. Councilmember Conrad. Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes.
Mayor Hulley.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Proton Soroka.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good luck. We'll be in touch. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Next, we'll entertain, uh, in our role as the Board of Zoning Appeals, a dimensional variance request for 417 Barclay, please. Whoever's here to speak on that.
We have to note this later. Take notice.
Oh, um, for item B, uh, on the agenda, if you have it under Board of Zoning Appeals, the request for 303 Hillcrest has been withdrawn from tonight's agenda. And we are moving now to, uh, 417 Barclay, please.
Sorry. There, there, I thought there for the, probably didn't for the.
Oh, that's. Good evening.
Good evening.
Give us your name and address, please, sir, both.
I'm Angelotti, I'm in the 417 Barclay in the apartments.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Branch Jackley, uh, the architect with the gender designer. And 25120, all birds, same for shores.
Thank you very much. Whoever wishes to speak, please, we're aware. We've all read your materials. Give us an, the public an understanding of, uh, the request for variance, please.
Okay, um, I have a two-story garage and I want to expand the garage. A lot of the wife's cars, yeah. I have new cars in here and we do it. But I have to climb out the whole middle of one car and get out. We don't have any good car out. I have to clear it off the ring where I can leave that door in to work, so I'm trying to make it a little more convenient. One of my cars is in the antique killer, it stays inside. What I've been doing is putting it on a dollar and moving it around so I can squeeze these cars in. Um, we have setback issue, uh, you know, we couldn't put a full bay on the garage, setback. And also it have an impact on my neighbor if I expanded, made it a full bay. So we, we designed a bay that was just barely big enough with, with a small door. Um, the plan do not show that we're gonna, we're gonna use brick on the excuse. I talked to my neighbor about it, he has a concern. So we want to reduce the size of the bay as much as possible. And it'll require, uh, a, uh, setback on variance. This, this illustration, I believe, shows a bigger door than I want. I want it to be six feet wide. So it's a very minimal extension on the house. I can speak to.
Yep.
So I can, I can speak to the dimension. So this, this iteration shows a seven-foot door. Um, after we spoke, we are gonna switch the brick, spoke to his neighbors and, and kind of, was something that, hey, let's make everybody happy, you're on there. Um, and minimizing the door gives us a little bit more play as far as tolerances go during construction. So our initial framing plant, we were designed down plus or minus one inch to hit the 25. I know the, it's a variable setback, but to try and hit the spirit of the schedule of regulations at 25 feet, we designed it as tight as we possibly could. Um, I know Bill Hadley from Hadley Home Improvements here and is gonna put around that project. I told him, you gotta be Johnny on the spot with the connections. But the extra foot, if we get the variance to 25, in reality, the likelihood is that we'll be a little bit shy of that. We'll just give the contracted team a little bit of play so that they're not pouring foundation. The last thing the building department come out and go, hey, you're, you know, an inch and a half too close. All of a sudden, it gives us a little bit more. The, the brick is gonna add a little bit to how far we come out. Because the initial plan was to cut that wall as close as possible. But we need, we do need to, uh, put a brick on there that matches the rest of the home and the rest of the neighbors. Keep talking, I heard it's out how, somebody said the neighborhood, the houses don't all look the same in the neighborhood. Well, my neighborhood is all house, Baker Homes. And they do look, so we don't want to lose that.
Anything else you gentlemen wish, uh, would like to tell us before I turn it over to members of City Council for their questions or comments?
Now, if you don't have any questions for us.
Thank you. Who has, uh, we'll start on this side. Um, Mr. Tadson, please.
Well, glad you brought up. It's been known, when I started working here 50 years ago, it's the Cox Bakers subdivision. And Cox Baker subdivision built all mid-century modern homes. Yep. The architectural details were confined to that area. Um, they even came in and put the curb roads in off a back end. And if you're not familiar with the area, even though the police crews are coming in there, it's a little confusing when you come out of the back and people shove or even laxing tin. Um, even though it's posted, it's signed, it's a little bit confusing. But, uh, they're called holiday homes. They were contemporary designs. Uh, that being said, I don't think your addition distracts or takes away, uh, from the, the holiday homes, the contemporary design. The only thing I have a comment on is, I'd like to see, cause you have one now, and the garage is existing, existing now facing this location. You have a window towards the back of the garage. Uh, right now, it's just, whether it's, uh, brick masonry or, or obviously, could you put me for one window in there just to give it a little bit of solace and some, well?
Sure, we can, um. That's, I'm for Bill.
I know Bill knows how to do.
We can, we'll move the existing window and put it back in.
Okay.
Okay? Is that it?
Yeah. So I, my, my point being, I don't think.
Better.
I don't think that the sign is gonna distract, right? So I think it still fits the neighborhood in the mid-century. Um, it was quite a project and there's only a couple in Gross Point Boulevard, the rest are in the forests of that whole area. So it's, it's very interesting neighborhood.
Any other comments?
I'll just say that, uh, our newest councilman, B. U. Two, I think if we can have, I'm invited to hear about the brick masonry. And I was gonna suggest a window, um, to avoid putting something that completely blank the facade wall. In terms of, I will ask, I'll, I'll note, rather, during, during the presentation here, uh, there were a few things that you discussed. Um, number one was that, um, you, uh, would, that without this variance, you would not be able to utilize, um, the three-car garage that is permitted within the R1, uh, residential district. Um, and you store an existing car site and that are the reason why you're, that's the, uh, that's the, the justice that may be done in this situation.
Um, any other comments before I?
Well, yeah, we've finished going all the way around. I thought you were starting over there.
We are. And I, do you have a comment, question?
Yeah.
Please.
Well, um, perhaps alone here, I have, uh, some grave concerns regarding your proposal. So let me just go through a couple of these and you can tell me what you think. But, you know, we talk a lot about practical difficulty and I don't see one. Practical difficulty means there's something unique about the lot that, uh, prevents you from doing a project other than going into your, into your setback. And I don't understand what that might be. Um, it, it strikes me that this is more of a want. You know, you want in other garage, uh, but we don't give variances based on wants. We give them on practical difficulties, in particular, practical difficulties that are not self-created. Uh, we have a report here from McKenna. Uh, McKenna writes, uh, in your conclusions, the addition of a third garage is uncommon within the district. And the proposal would result in a building that is not completely harmonious with the surrounding area. And that's really important. Every one of us in this room could go out tomorrow when it's daylight and look straight down the block. And you will look and see all of our homes are all lined up very nicely, right? We do that on purpose because we have a zoning warrant. Everything, zoning warrant is really important here. So if we give you a, uh, an addition, you're going to be building toward the street, six and three-quarters feet more, and it's going to be sticking out and it's gonna be obstructing anybody who's looking straight down. It's gonna be not, it's gonna be not good curb, uh, appeal. And it's gonna be obstructing the harmonious nature of your, of your lot here. Um, in addition, I believe that this is a self-created hardship that, that we're talking about here. That the high visual impact that this is gonna result in at the curbs is not acceptable to me. It is, uh, it is not gonna be harmonious. So without a practical difficulty in one that is not, that is self-created, lacks, lacks, uh, harmonious nature of the, um, the, the surrounding area. Um, I, 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 unless I hear more, okay?
You want me to address any of that?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm getting close to retirement age. And one of the things I enjoy and always have enjoyed is working on an antique car and have always had. And, um, yes, it's self-created, but I believe it's something that, it gives me enjoyment. Okay, one, my, my second job is, is E M S, E M T. And I see a lot of that stuff. And I like to, when I'm home, I like to get into my hobby and enjoy it. And when I retire, I'd like to do that. Um, yes, it is self-created. I, I, I need that for my enjoyment. Um, as far as the harmonious to the neighborhood, this original, uh, plan as evaluated by, in the report, had siding on the side of it. And I think that's a lot of the reason why, um, it didn't, it didn't do well. Now, when, if you look at the setback that I'm gonna create here in the neighboring houses, it's a straight line. My, my garage currently set back from both of the neighbors. It's gonna be straight line view. It does affect one little view down the street, and that's why I'm trying to make it as small as possible. I even talked about getting rid of the door and just giving me a little extra room on the side. Right? So I can get these cars in and out without climbing out the window. So your, your concerns are, I understand them. You want to be sure of, you, you ready? Yeah, um, so speaking of the site, is, as we've made a protest, I sort of brought up that the third car bay is allowed, uh, by right of zoning for this. The way that the house is sized on the property, the only direction to add the other bay is towards the street front. And I, I would say, I, I could be wrong, I.
Well, it, can I interrupt? It's by right means you can build it as long as it's within the code, within, and you're not violating any, so.
And I recognize the setback variance requesting. As far as the, the variable setback, so when we look at the, you know, sort of straight line that you're talking about, there is one of the houses, I believe that Matt sent over the list of, one of the houses was already actually five feet. I know it's average of a few. My argument would be that, you know, should want to focus with further setback, build closer to the street next year, that, that average slowly would decrease. And ultimately, that, that straight line is a variable thing as well. But we aren't trying to go past the closest house that's already there. And we definitely don't want to go past the, the schedule regulations 25-foot. Just to keep in spirit, as close as possible with the, the zoning ordinance is pretty. Um, and, and we are designing, I, I don't, I don't know if it's clear on the, that, it's on the second page of this. We've designed it down, like I said, the framing, I couldn't get any fewer studs in there without, and, you know, sacrificing structural integrity. So we're trying to, on the bottom left, we show like where are our jack posts, our regulations existing. Uh, the existing, uh, support for the existing bay door is, we're taking, we're actually taking some of that all the way to try and get us as far from the street as possible to get a, uh, the door. And like you mentioned, we are gonna be shaving off a foot, so we'd likely be a little bit further away than 25 in reality. I wanted to request 225 just to give Bill a little bit of construction tolerance because we're gonna be probably within six inches or so. Can I have one more thing? I love the neighborhood I'm in and I love my neighbors. I, I want to be taken out of their box. I don't, and we want to move, right? And I, I want to enjoy, and not interfere too much with the neighborhood. Uh, we're gonna add a window, add a brick.
Ms. Donovan, please. Mr. Soroka, one moment, please.
Sir, um, I had the opportunity to speak with a resident over the weekend about a variance request for a garage. And he had to withdraw because the hardship was not there. And I have to support my colleague, Councilman Lev Wood. You stated it yourself, it's for pleasure. And if we go down that road, I would be inclined to give it to anyone that comes in and says, well, my hardship is, it's for pleasure. So my recommendation would be, maybe you take some time and think about your hardship because it has to be tied to the land. And, um, by your own admission, it's.
Well.
How rest they are.
Apparently, my wife's car, which we have, we have new members of the family that have moved to the area, and she doesn't drive a small car anymore, so the SUV doesn't fit. It's, you know, it's, the hardship is not mine, really. It's on her. Want her car to be in the garage so she can take some grandkids. The cars, my car with some, I, I, I'm fine with clearing one of my cars off, God. But I didn't, I guess this is the first time I ever done this. So I didn't realize you have to be on a hardship of some sort to get, I mean, it's not a pool, okay? It's, it's just a garage to keep the cars in.
Well, yeah, the hardship requirement comes about is, uh, when you seek a variance. And it's one of the elements that's necessary to show that, uh, you have a difficulty, that there's a hardship, that you did not create it yourself, things of that nature. There, there are strict elements as, uh, explained to you in your application, uh, that, that were completed.
But there's quite a few people that own three cars and they leave them out. I just can't.
There are, there are, and we've approved some under different circumstances. You have the same procedural hurdle, um, that our city attorney explained, that you need a, uh, minimum of five votes to carry it with one council member, uh, absent. Uh, I don't, uh, pretend to speak on how people are gonna vote, but I get the sense the two are, uh, may possibly opposed to it, uh, as well as myself. But Mr. Soroka, did you have one more comment, sir?
Yeah, I mean, I'd say, I, I, we have, we've talked a lot about garages for the last few years. Um, I recall back in April of 2023, we approved a four, uh, a four-bay garage at 300 Moros Avenue, a second garage in addition to that one. Uh, we did the same in, uh, back in, uh, May of 2024 at 270 Gross Point Boulevard, we approved a second garage, or seriously, a second garage in the front. Um, and that was a, a whole new garage, um, beyond the existing one. Um, and as I recall in some of those discussions, one of we, one of the things we talked about, uh, in, in approving other garage builds was the need, the, the changing needs of, of people. Um, modern garages need to be a little bit larger to accommodate larger cars. So, um, and so I think that, um, there could be a, a, a perceived difficulty, um, with, uh, the, the size of modern, modern cars and the needs for, and the needs for more automobile storage. What I would also argue is that substantial justice will be done because if we're actually gonna, if he's gonna do this and we would approve it with a window on the front of this, you're gonna get a better-looking garage than the one we've got right now, which is just some siding and some brick. And so in this instance, I, I just see, uh, we, there have been instances where we've said no to garages because, uh, but there have been plenty of instances where we've said yes, when the need has been more storage space for garage, for cars. And, um, and in this case, I actually see some improvements aesthetically.
Um, could you, Derek, real quick, put up the, uh, photo of the proposed, uh, or the illustration of the proposed? I, I would indicate, you're right, we have had a lot of garage discussions. I think the properties in which those garages were approved were much larger.
Yes.
Than this, quite frankly, maybe two or three times bigger. Here's my problem, sir, being very honest with you, uh, put the schematic, yeah, go down of the actual picture. Yeah, that, please. Um. I don't like the front of it whatsoever. It looks like.
You need, you need to change the garage doors.
Yeah.
Change the garage doors.
Something. It's, I, forgive me for one minute.
It's not the door, it looks like. It's the original, we'll do it with the house.
This facing the street and your neighbors, got to do better. Uh, I think you gotta do better.
Yeah, we did. We were talking masonry and we talked to.
Windows. No, I think you gotta do better.
Yeah, we did that.
No, no.
That face.
Excuse me. I'm speaking. I think you need to do better.
That, that face of the garage, they look exactly like it does now. Bring halfway up, window and the site, just like it does now.
Mr. Mayor, man, that one more.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see a photo. I'd like to see more than one window, possibly. What, I'm sorry, excuse me, sir. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We can come back.
What did he say?
We can come back.
Oh, come back.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make another recommendation that at some point, sooner than later, we take a thoughtful look at the ordinance committee with the city's, uh, staff, take a thoughtful look at our garage ordinance. I feel that if we go, if we make a decision to approve this, um, we will not be preserving the integrity of the ordinance. um, we will not be preserving the integrity of the ordinance. Especially given that I spent time talking with a resident who clearly, number one, as you, didn't understand hardship. And then he had more clarity. But one of the things he did not say that I, I do have an issue with is someone saying, I need this hardship, but it's for pleasure. And that is not.
I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Yes. I would recommend that maybe you consider withdrawing. And we take a look at the ordinance. And we go from there. But I, I cannot, for the sake of my own integrity and good governance, approve your.
Well, any proposed new ordinance would take more time than what is requested here. A, a new ordinance is something to look at, absolutely, to possibly amend it.
Amended.
But that, that would take months. Uh, my recommendation, if you want, is to, um, provide us with new illustrations, adjourn us possibly to our meeting in February, uh, if you'd like. Uh, table it until February. Get us some plans that show exactly what you are proposing to do. Notify all your neighbors. I'm going to ask if there are any neighbors here. I was down the street today. I did speak with, uh, one of your neighbors, uh, across the street from you. Um, we'll leave that discussion to ourselves, but I'd like what you plan to do to be readily visible to all of us when we make our decision. How many windows, what the siding is going to be, things of that nature, if you don't mind.
If I were to shorten that up and get rid of the door, I just extend, extend it a few feet. Would that help?
It would help me. It would help me. I won't speak for anyone else. It would help me. Yes.
Can't, I can't argue about whether I need it or not. I don't think, I don't think that's, I don't think that's what I could do. I, but I will, I will make it, make illustrations bring it back in February.
If I can just ask you anything.
Yes. No, go ahead, go ahead.
Just a, a quick, so initially this, this was like a 3D reference, it was just for the building department. That was the intent of it. So I do apologize, the material change kind of last second.
That's all right.
But, uh, when, for February, if we were to come with one, A, with the, the smaller bay door and two without, uh, would you guys view both as like, obviously like what the ideal for him would be to have the, the third bay door and in lieu of that, having an alternative proposal in front of you?
Look, I, I don't think we're, I don't think it's a door situation.
Yeah, dimensionally, I don't think it's going to make a huge impact, one way or the other, with it without it. Visually, yeah, I could have the, that's, uh.
Make it appealing for people who are driving by who don't think they're staring at a stuck out garage right across the street from their home is 20 feet back.
Okay, all right. Thanks for consideration, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could touch on what, uh, Council would say. On this block, whether you go left or right, you can't stand there and look straight down anything. But the house is all sticking out different. I think it's third street. His neighbor's house is exact neighbor to the left of his house when you're looking at the front door. His addition, he put on whatever, sticks up this far. So you can't stand in his driveway and look and see everything. The configuration of the street makes the lots all a little different. Uh, it makes setbacks all a little different. And the second thing is, when Cox and Baker did this, I did a little research on it today. The reason there's no other that I could find and anything that could explain, there's no other three, uh, uh, car garages in there. Although it's a lot, there's no other three car, because when they did this in the mid 50s to the 60s, most people had one car, not two cars. And that car was a Corvair or, or, you know, a little Plymouth Randler. Now we've got these big, large cars. Most families have two or three cars. So if it's architecturally done, where it meets with our, our eyes, where we like it eyes, the windows and whatever in there, I think you'd stand a better chance. But I don't agree with you, Lev. I don't think you can sit and stand on any of these front lawns and got a straight line to anything. But they're all sticking out different. I mean, I, I, I drove 10 times in the last two days. And you, you don't have that visual.
That's the uniqueness of the area.
Yeah, it's not the, it's not the standard 50 or 55 or 45 foot by 100 by 150 lots. There's pie shaped lots. There's some closer to the street. There's some further away from the street. And I just think that the only reason there's not more three, and if they come, someone comes in and will want one, well, let's see why. But I don't think this takes away from, most importantly, the Cox and Baker intention on design. It matches what they wanted. It's the contemporary look and, and I think it is harmonious with the neighborhood. That's just my personal.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, that as a matter of courtesy, you may want to see if there are any people who would like to speak.
Yes.
This evening. And then after that, it strikes me that whether it's a 30 day or a 60 day adjournment with new drawings, that's, I think, where we're headed to.
Thank you. Um, as I indicated, is there anyone here who would like to, uh, speak on the proposed variance request? Sign that. All right. Are you gentlemen in favor? When do you think you could get proposed plans back for January meeting or February? We leave that to you.
We could ask.
All right. Are you willing to table this matter then to January?
Yeah.
I entertain the motion to table the variance request for 417 Barclay until our meeting in January 2026.
I moved.
Mr. Shroka, second, supported by Mr. Jensen. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion to table carries. Thank you all very much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Next, please. Consideration of a resolution to authorize the publication of a notice of intent to issue bonds. Mr. Eastside.
Yes, uh, before you is a required notification, uh, exactly that, that we intend to, to issue bonds, uh, for our, uh, pool project at Pier Park. Um, this is something obviously we've contemplated and, uh, with, with, um, with, with, we're currently are paying off the final debt service on a couple of other recreational projects. Uh, the idea then would be to levy, uh, a, a bond issuance, uh, for the financing of the new pool, bathhouse, uh, splash pad and surrounding amenities. And so, uh, this is just the intent. Uh, there, there's a proposed dollar amount of, of issuance of $12 million in bonds. That would be a maximum. Uh, we'd be coming back to city council, uh, with the, with a number probably lower than that. Um, but gives us the most latitude to, to remember notice.
There any questions by members of city council? Members of the public, any questions? Is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution authorizing the notice of intent to issue bonds?
I have a motion.
Mr. Great, thank you.
I move that the city council approve the resolution entitled Notice of Intent to Issue Meniscal Bonds for the Pier Park Pool and Bath House Project in the amount not to exceed $12 million pursuant to Act 34 of the Public Acts of Michigan 2001 as amended and further to authorize a city clerk to publish the notice of intent as required by law and further to authorize all actions necessary to carry out the publication and statutory referendum process as indicated in the written material that we have.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Councilperson Donovan. Any further discussion? Any discussion of the public? Last chance. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Next, consideration of the city council regular meeting schedule for 2026. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the proposed meeting schedule for this coming year?
Yes.
Andy, Mr. Wood.
Got a couple of, um.
A couple?
Yeah, a couple conflict.
Okay, what dates and?
Should we deal with them at the month before or what?
Yeah, let's see. What months do you have conflict?
April 13th, I'll be out of town and then August 10th.
And Ms. Donovan?
No, sir.
Sorry, thank you. Anyone else have a conflict? Mr. Jensen?
February 9th.
So February, April, um. That's three meetings. We can, um. Look at. February 9th, you're out of town, sir?
Yes.
I'm not available the 16th. That's a winter break for South. Do you mind if we keep the February meeting, uh, as published?
Yes.
Well, could we, is it, can we not do it the next day?
The 17th? Oh, the 10th?
I have, I would have a conflict.
Any too. Yeah, if it's just me, let's just keep it as it is.
Do you mind?
Yeah, we have to. I'm dealing with the conflict. Everybody else have to.
Well, Beth's not here.
Well, it's fair, but, uh, we've done it before. Is Ms. Conrad Wilberly's not here? It's, uh, Mr. Shroka.
Be too absent.
I don't think it's fair that I should have.
We'll try to accommodate. I would be more than happy. It looked, a few of us are going to be gone because of the mid winter break, I know, for schools. Uh, it's going to be a tough one to.
So you just want to, maybe, maybe in March or April, when I'm gone, can we just look at that one and just?
Sure. When are you gone again? Your, March is a bad, March 9?
March 13th and August 10th.
But March 9 is no good?
March 9 is okay with me.
That's the date of our meeting. And you said March 13?
Uh, April.
April and August.
April and August.
On August.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm the same with, uh, with Dan. If it's just me.
Um, for publication, I prefer we keep it the same if everyone else is good with that since, uh, the notice. We keep it on the second Tuesday if it's one individual.
All right.
Are you sure that's me with your?
I, you know, you guys can get along well without me. I know you'd hate to lose me.
I, I will say, we're talking about, I guess I may be out, but that's a long time from now. I, I.
Why don't we take that up in the summer?
Yeah, let's take it up.
Is there a motion to approve the proposed? Ms. Donovan has made a motion to approve the meeting schedule for 2026. Is there support for her motion?
What?
Mr. Wood, thank you. Any discussion from council further? Any discussion of the public? Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Next, the consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. Consideration of approval of the 2026 administrative fee schedule. Consideration of appointments to the historic district commission. Consideration of reappointment of Mr. Farquhar to Parks and Harbor. And consideration of a request to approve the November 2025 invoices. Does anyone wish that any matter be removed from the proposed consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? And I would add that it has been amended to add that Ms. Gina Tacos be appointed to the Historic District Commission in addition to Jared Canton, Eric Hagglethorn, RC Pashke and Rich Solak, and I'm sorry, Rob Wood as well. There was a slight amendment, uh, late this afternoon.
So moved.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Ritchie. Any discussion further from council? Any discussion of the public? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Next, we receive the public safety report as a matter of record. Um, Mr. Eastside, any, uh, reports from you as, uh, city manager, please?
I have no other business.
Uh, members of council, any further business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Will we discuss this evening, the village market lighting? Uh, we received that email from a resident or we want to table it?
No, it's not on the formal agenda, but Mr. Eastside can give us an update as to the issue received and how he is dealing with it on our behalf.
We actually want to look at it during the evening. I, I think their lighting is, uh, you know, exterior lighting, uh, for security of a parking lot is allowed. Uh, we just want to make sure, number one, it's permitted for that word and that it complies with the ordinance, uh, in terms of, uh, down lighting and lumas and, and those things. Um, is there anything else, Mr. Bach?
I just want to fire for the being tonight. And we have the, the footcandle meter to measure light levels. So the lights themselves, they are downlight. They, the idea being that the lens of a light is horizontal to the ground. So instead of like these teardrop bulbs, as you see, old school, the polar headlights that shoot light in all directions, they shoot straight down. Uh, all the lights comply with that, the ordinance from that direct. At that point, and I use the footcandle meter and the ordinance, it doesn't really have a footcandle level, but there is one section that talks about one foot candle at the property line. And because of the types of lighting, when I stood next to the residential house there, it was zero. Now, the person's house that.
It's been up like a cloud.
Explain, there is a street light in the alley right next to her house, which was already there for these other lights. So I went a little far to get away from the street lights because the lighting goes along whole that village market. And that, you know, once you get away from that street light, it goes out to you.
Thank you.
But, but, but with that said, if it is creating an issue with the neighbor, we certainly will talk to the business owners and see if there's any other way to obviate the, the, the.
Right. I think it turned off when they closed. Their, their point was that it's for the sake of your employees and customers, uh, if they're closed.
When do they close next?
I think 9 o'clock.
9, I think 9. Um, any comments from members of city administration?
I just like to, just be sounding a little biased here, but what a great job the public safety department did at the parade. And I did that for many years. That's a big, big job and it went off perfect, uh, perfectly. I think they did a great job.
They did. And I was going to, before I turn to public comment, they did a great job at the parade and they did a great job with several calls for mutual assistance for a fire on Vendome. Uh, I was there watching. The coordination between the various departments was unbelievable. Um, they had everything under control, including, uh, picking up an elderly resident and getting her out of the home and, like, getting her grandson out of the home. And you and your colleagues should be commended. It was, uh, great to watch, great to observe. Uh, you have a great department and, uh, you saved that house from being a total loss, w- without a doubt. So I know you came back to the city for this, so thank you very much. Members of the public, any public comments, sir? Please welcome. Uh, name and address, if you'd be so kind. I'm glad you're here.
1134 Richmond.
Spell your last name, Michael, for me.
Hello, hello, S B E L T.
Thank you, sir. And address one more time.
384 Richmond.
Thank you, sir.
So I guess I'm here to talk about the obvious that was discussed earlier this evening. The smell that is coming from the sewage wastewater treatment facility. Frankly speaking, you know, I was here when that facility was installed back in the mid 90s. There was no water coming from that facility at all until somewhere into 2015 timeframe. Since then, I've made numerous calls to the city complaining about it. No action has ever been taken upon. Frankly, I'm disappointed in hearing that we're still talking about the carbon filters. Because the carbon filters are not the fix. I think that the city owes the residents of that area to go in and find out exactly what was the capacity we have associated for, how much is going through the sodium economy today? And then I also think that we need to look at a couple of things. One, what is the, you know, we mentioned, keep talking about, hey, this is drought, you know, clean droughts is now not for the. Well, frankly speaking, guys, we've been living in a changing environment. The 90s was very warm temperatures, not a lot of rain in the summer. There was no smell coming from that facility. So what changed? What can be done? And I want to thank you guys. I've got to learn a lot about wastewater treatment facilities. So why are we not increasing the pump cycle during these down periods where we're forcing the sewage through the system instead of just letting it sit there? When was the last time the venting system has been reviewed and corrected? Have the gases been replaced? What is the maintenance we've done on this facility? There's no record. There's nothing coming out to the public. It's been going on for 15 years, you know? Mr. Reese, I called you numerous times with very little, you know, nothing to it. Nothing gets done. It's shameful. It's now on the front page of newspapers. We've got TV stations out there. And frankly, you know, I guess no longer hearing what we're going to look into it. I think now we need to have a plan with dates, who's responsible and deliverable action plans that can be tracked and monitored by the residents. So I guess my question to the city councils, what are we doing?
Well, this, in this, I don't mean to avoid your question or comment, but during public comment, we don't typically respond. But I can tell you, uh, as you heard Councilman Ritchie, uh, insist earlier and Mr. Eastside. Ritchie insist earlier, and Mr. Reeseide say as well, that we are in the process of following up. We are gonna follow up. As I indicated, it's completely unacceptable for residents to have to put up with those odors. I have prosecuted and shut down businesses across the state of Michigan for odor issues that have made national news. I sense where you're coming, I feel for where you're coming from. And rest assured, we're gonna be in contact with people. We're gonna let you know, and we're gonna be in touch with you specifically as well, sir.
So then you're probably, we're probably already in violation of the Michigan area?
I'm not sure. No, I'm not gonna concede that. Look, again, I'm not gonna concede things of that nature, but we appreciate your comments. I don't think the odor levels rise that high. I have accepted... Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not gonna concede that we're in violation of the state, of state law. I'm not gonna concede that. But I will concede that there's an issue there that we're gonna look into, and we're gonna get answers to you and to the others who are affected by that.
For the rest of the city, I can tell you, I would be very terrified if you are in violation of Chief Major Ask. Now, if the city came, if the state of Michigan came out, actually did studies, then you guys would have a huge problem. As the landlord, because I keep hearing you don't own them, you're not the owners, but you certainly are a little...
Thank you very much. We'll be in touch, sir. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir. Welcome. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Theron Porcak. I live on 164 Richmond. Last name is K O R K S A K. First name is Theron T H E. I got the observation out to share with Council, but it's a definitely, I assume that both Kirchville and Maros, and also Lake Shore and Maros. I've lived here about five years now. Retired when the Navy came here. It's great neighborhood, not a lot of complaints. I mean, just things that are out of my control, right? But in the last six weeks, last four weeks, I've been hit almost six, six times at these crossings. And it was all the time from the morning, evening, and then, and Charlie is a distracted driver. They get to the line, they get out of the phone, says, I told this is nothing that you all can do. I mean, there's laws to address this right now. But at least six OKs, I've been intercepted. After spending, I had the redway in the crosswalk, and I've come with an 18-inch stuff getting run over, and twice, I got yelled at for not letting them go first, or not looking enough. I'm like, you're the one that's not looking. And what I wanted to do was, I wanted to get her attention. I mean, the only thing, I had my phone, I ran my phone and threw it at her, but then I would have somehow assaulted her, because she would have drove off the road. So I'm like, okay, I can't do that either. So I went down to the police station, and I made a report. At least I tried to make a report, and they were super friendly. Hope services is great here. The peace officers are great. But, you know, it was kind of explaining to me, well, you know, you're in the street, you're crossing the street, get their vision. I'm like, well, hold on a second. I get it, in the same thing, but I'm like, I spent time in crap. I can't stand desert storm. Love to see, love to see, but here, but all over this world, I know I crossed the street. And I appreciate, I really do appreciate the officer. I do. And I wasn't gonna say anything to him at the time, but he suggested I come here and make a comment. So that's what I'm doing here. And I think it was a great suggestion by him. And I don't know what can be done. You know, I did some reading on the internet. That's always a dangerous thing. But I don't know if mine's gonna be changed, or a button, or something. I don't know. But I know that, especially that Kirchville-Maros intersection, there's that bus shelter there. I'm not sure what it's there for. But, you know, it's there for a reason. But it's difficult sometimes for drivers to see her, especially if they're coming, if they're going towards the lake and they're making a left-hand turn. You can't see until you're into the intersection, making the turn. But also, walking like the Jerry's, going across Maros and Kirchville, then people start making that left-hand turn, especially in the morning hours, when everyone's kinda going to work, just distracting fun with them. I mean, it is, I don't know what else to do than, other than just kind of like, I actually have this track I want to show you. Probably can't see, but if you, if you sit and walk at night, I glow. Okay. I have, I have something on my dog, he glows. I walk with this strobe flashlight flashing. I feel like I'm like an idiot, like going, okay, you see, you know? But I don't know what else to do. So other than come back and comment, and I appreciate your guys picked up the patrols over there. But really, it happens in rough, cloudy morning, and evenings. But even middle of the day, it happens. You know, especially us, just people aren't paying attention when they get to the intersection.
Well, we've noticed it. We appreciate your comment and the compliments. In fact, our city has put, to watch out for pedestrians at several intersections. We've got signs posted, including the one at Lake Shore and Maros. And we, distracted driving is a critical problem where we live. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
I made the report, because I didn't know. I tried to make a report, nothing to really take, because they're just like, come here. I appreciate coming here. I look a lot of bear and citizen.
Don't come to us for a four-car garage on Richmond. We'll make a deal. We'll watch out for you. Thank you all. Is there any further public comment? Not entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Councilman Wood, support. All in favor? Very good meeting, everyone. Thanks to the public for attending. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
I'll be there, I'll be there.